Did we lose things? Good evening, Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting for May 23rd, 2023. And to begin this meeting, can I have a roll call?
Council, agency, authority members Stockton, Richie, Silva, Chapman, Roberts, Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Wiley, Mayor, Chair Carley.
Here. Please stand with me in a moment of silence. Stockton, lead us in the pledge.
Pledge, pages, to the flag, United States, and to three public or which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes in tonight's agenda?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes?
Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We will now move on to presentations. And we do have two this evening. We have National Public Works Week. And so if our Director, Brian McLean, could come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It is National Public Works Week, which is a celebration of the men and women of Public Works who connect our world. And in fact, that is the theme this year, connecting the world through Public Works. I showed this slide last year, but it is emblematic of what Public Works does. It's everywhere. It's under our feet. It's above our head. It's in our facilities. It's buses. It's sewer. It's water. It's setback landscaping and parks. Public Works is everywhere. Some design projects that I'd like to highlight tonight. These are storm repairs that were made just recently from the 2017 storm that occurred. And this is behind the McBride Senior Center where the abutments up to the pedestrian paths were washed away. And these were just currently repaired by our CIP design team. In land development, the land development crew came up with a development impact fee credit process where they allowed the developer to construct the Foxborough Parkway, which accelerated the project and allowed the Foxborough Knolls subdivision to be erected sooner than normal. And on the maintenance side, the parks are going through a series of improvements. At Alamo Creek Park, you can see some of the exercise equipments that have been replaced, as well as the beautifications that we're making along our medians and areas around downtown. And then finally, the men and women of Public Works were putting in those long hours, coming in early, and doing the work to improve the city of Vacaville. This is your Public Works team, serving Vacaville.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to read the proclamation to you, but first and foremost, I want to say thank you to you and your staff, obviously, for the opening of the center out at the courtyard today. So appreciate all that Public Works does, and it's a, this is a good time to recognize National Public Works Week. Whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of the men and women across the United States who provide and maintain the public infrastructure and services collectively known as Public Works. The theme of this year's 63rd Annual National Public Works Week is connecting the world through Public Works. And it is in the interest of the public, for the citizens and civic leaders, to better understand the integral role that public infrastructure plays in protecting the environment, improving public health and safety, contributing to the economic vitality, and enhancing the overall well-being of every community. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are dependent upon the efforts and skill of the qualified Public Works professionals who serve our citizens with dedication and a commitment to their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 21st through 27th, 2023, National Public Works Week. So congratulations. Next tonight, we have another presentation, the Building Safety Month Proclamation. So Director Erin Morris, if you could come forward.
For recognizing the month of May as Building Safety Month, many are unaware of the Building Division's contributions to the community, and it's regularly recognized as a form of public safety. But it truly is. Public safety begins with safe construction. Our Building Division enforces a substantial set of codes established to ensure minimum fire and life safety requirements for all types of construction. Building codes were developed to protect the community, as well as emergency responders during emergency operations. Every day, our Building Division staff works hard to ensure safe construction throughout the community of Vacaville. We are a small but mighty group of individuals, both in the office and out in the field. Our front counter staff, our building inspectors, are a dedicated team of individuals, and we provide them with the necessary training to continually grow their understanding of the development process and the codes that they enforce. We're a committed group, improving our level of customer service, and providing quality inspections to our community to ensure fire life safety. We appreciate all of you acknowledging the importance of building safety within the city of Vacaville and memorializing it with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to read the proclamation to you and to our audience today. Whereas the city of Vacaville is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as wildland fires, floods, earthquakes, hurricanes, snowstorms, and tornadoes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials. Assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 2023, National Building Safety Month. So congratulations. Having had the experience of home construction remodeling, I can, I can really appreciate the hard work that your staff does every day, trying to make sure you stay up on codes, and that safety is a priority. So thank you for your service. And you have to appreciate, I needed a larger print tonight, and so, just so you can understand, maybe an inside joke, this is what I'm reading off of. It's all, it's all good. Not wasting papers, don't reprint it. With that, we've concluded our presentations. What I'd like to do real quick, though, not lengthy, does anybody on the DIAS want to say anything based upon the presentations? Definitely a job well done. Councilmember Stockton. We don't need to do the whole council, but I just want to get a feel for those up here. So go ahead.
I just wanted to extend my thanks to both, both of these crucial contributors to our community, and just thank you for all the work that you do and continue to do. I know that you're often overlooked because you do such a good job. People only call you when things break, or when they don't get things done as fast as they want. But I can tell you that this is an amazing community to live in because of the hard work that you do. And so I just wanted to extend my thanks to both of you.
Councilmember Silva.
Just kind of echoing both comments, both services are essential to the quality of life that we have here, from more workers to people just trying to live day-to-day, their everyday life in a safe environment, making sure the fluids that are coming to our house are clear, and the ones that are leaving don't come back. The, you know, and just like with respect to the, you know, the heavy rains, that in itself, you know, I, you know, we all know folks in the surrounding region, and, you know, a lot of places were hit hard in different ways. And here, you know, I don't want that to go unappreciative of folks putting themselves out there in that super wet weather. Every time, there was one point last year, I was trying to go around handing out food. Every time I heard about a new spot, they were gone. And so some cops ended up getting their burritos, so I apologize. But no, I just definitely appreciate everything I'll do, so appreciate.
Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much for both departments. I have the pleasure, I feel like every morning, part of my routine, go downtown to workout six or seven, and every single day, the only people I see out is Public Works. And I built some amazing friendships. It's amazing what people don't realize they're doing behind the scenes at nighttime, emergencies, and every single day. And I built some amazing friendships with Public Works, just the fact that just seeing them every single day out in the community. So I mean, thank you for the building in codes, but Public Works, I mean, you guys are the invisible soldiers that are just keeping the city going. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Had the pleasure today to visit the Public Works facility. Beautiful site, so individuals, hard at work, hardly, hard at work. And it was, it was really, you're very deserving of what is now over there on Ellison Drive. You know, we have to provide for the employees, as well as take care of the city. We have to take care of you in order to have the city we have today. And I admire leadership that gets out with the troops and don't mind getting their hands dirty. And I witnessed that of Brian during the floods. He was out there all alone, but he was in the trenches. And you have to respect that. And all I can say to the code, those, I have stories about codes, but I'll leave them alone, but appreciate all the work that you're required to do. And with the growth taking place here in Vacaville, it's, that's a lot. It's a lot that you, that you have to get out, especially with the size of the staff. So to both groups, congratulations on a job well done. And we, I appreciate the work you do.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you. And be sure to say thank you to all your staff that are hard at work, and that's, everything else is the same.
Yeah. Thank you to you all. It really is amazing staff, but the ability that what we saw today, for those who weren't there, 30 years in the making, the, the new corporation yard building administration to be able to operate out of there is really good for the city. It's good for our staff, but it makes us more efficient and effective, but it's good for the city. So with that, we're going to move on to item six, Consent Calendar. Is there, is there anyone on the DIAS wishing to pull an item tonight? Hearing none, anyone from the public wishing to pull an item from Consent Calendar this evening? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion? Motion, the second? The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will move on to A through F. We'll move on to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone within the public wishing to address the council on any item that is not within the council's agendas tonight, but it is within our jurisdiction. I'm seeing none. I will close business from the floor. We will move on to public hearings. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This first item before you tonight is an ordinance amendment to the contract between the City Council and our public employee PERS system. We have Dimple Patel here, our Employee Services Manager, to give you a presentation on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the City Manager mentioned, I will be presenting item 8A, which is the CalPERS Contract Amendment for Cost Sharing. So before I start the presentation, I just wanted to go over a couple of definitions. So the Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013, also referred to as PEPRA, was effective as of January of 2013, and it made changes to the pension benefits and how they're applied. One of the biggest things that it established was the difference between classic members and new members. And so classic members is defined as anyone that's hired into the system as of 1-1-20, or prior to 1-1-2013. And currently, we have 273 classic employees. And then new members are defined as anyone hired into the system on or after 1-1-2013. And we currently have 345 employees. And then the normal cost is that, is defined as the annual cost of service accrual for the upcoming fiscal year for active employees determined, which is determined by CalPERS actuarial studies that are done each year. So the normal cost is something that the city does not have control over. It is mandated by CalPERS. So all city employees pay their portion of pension costs. So whether that's classic members or new employees, new members, everybody has a cost towards the pension. Back in 2016, VMO, AMG, and department head groups agreed to pay more toward the pension benefits and began the cost sharing, which ultimately means that the employee is picking up a portion of the employer's cost. So the cost sharing is in addition to the normal employee cost that they already pay. Cost share for classic employees is based on a stated amount within a collectively bargained agreement, and therefore is not included in this contract amendment. So for classic members, they have the 7% employee rate, plus the 1% employer cost share for a total contribution of 8%. For cost share for new employees is a little bit more complicated, and is the reason for this agenda item. So the cost share for new employees is made up of two amounts that equal that same 8% total as classic members. So the first component of the cost share for new members is the 50% of normal costs. As I mentioned earlier, this is an amount that's determined by CalPERS actuarial studies that are done each year, so we do not have control over that amount. The second component is the employer cost share, which is an agreed-upon amount to equal the same 8% total. So just kind of going over a little timeline, in 2016, that was when we had the original agreement for department heads, VMO, and AMG. At the time, 50% of the normal cost was 6.25%. And in order to maintain the total of 8% contribution, the cost share amount was 1.75%. Then in 2020, we had to do a contract amendment for those three groups because of a rate change to the normal cost. So in 2020, the 50% of normal cost increased to 6.75%, which resulted in the cost share amount being reduced to 1.25% to maintain the total 8%. And then now, in 2023, with this current contract amendment for those same three groups, we will be doing, the rate change is happening again with the 50% of normal cost increasing to 7.5%, resulting in the cost share amount being reduced to 0.5% to maintain the total of 8%. And then CalPERS, in order to make these rate changes, CalPERS does require a contract amendment to adjust the cost share amounts. Okay? So due to the normal cost changing from 6.75% to 7.5%, the amendment would be to change the current cost share from 1.25% to 0.5% to maintain that total contribution of 8% for employees. So just a couple of comments, there would be no change to pension benefits for the employees. There will be no impact to the overall contribution on the employee's side. They still will remain contributing 8%. There are no impacts to the city's unfunded liability. And we have notified all the impacted bargaining groups and given them a list of all the PEPRA members. So between the department heads, AMG, and VMO, we have a total of 59 new members, new employees. So staff's recommendation is going to be adopt the subject resolution and introduce the subject ordinance with the first reading. The second reading and recommendation to adopt the ordinance will be brought again to the June 13th council meeting. And then effective date of the ordinance will be July 13th, or the pay period that includes July 1st. So that ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. If we have any council with questions, Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. The cost share of 50% that's established by the state, correct? Or is established by CalPERS?
The 50% normal cost or the cost share?
The cost, no, the cost share is 8%. I'm sorry, the normal cost of 50%.
That is, that's based on, that's by CalPERS. It's based on actuarial studies that are performed by CalPERS each year?
Right.
So they tell us what that 50% of normal cost is.
The cost, shared cost.
That's an agreed upon amount between the city and the bargaining group.
Between the city.
To maintain the total of 8%.
Okay. How was the 8% determined? And I see we're just holding steady at 8%.
Through the collective bargaining process, the PEPRA employees, the unions agreed that the PEPRA employees would pay the same amount as the classic employees. So the classic employees currently pay a total of 8%. Therefore, the new or PEPRA employees also pay the 8% total.
Okay. But I see, and I'm not having problems with it, but I see that we are not moving from that 8%, 8% share. Is there a reason for that?
Because we've collectively bargained with the bargaining units for a total of 8%. Yeah, if we wanted to increase or decrease the cost share portion, they would need to go through the collective bargaining process.
Right. Has anyone, has that discussion been presented during negotiations?
That would be something that would be the direction of the council for the staff to make part of negotiations.
Right. My question was, has either side made mention of possibly wanting to increase that from 8% through the years?
Not currently, no.
Okay, so we're just at the eight. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you for the information. It was very well laid out. My question is just that this affects those particularly unions, 59 people, and everyone else just maintains the 8% that they're already paying? Or do the other ones not have it?
Yes, so it varies between bargaining groups, but these 59 employees, these three bargaining groups have the cost share for their PEPRA members. For anybody that does not have the cost share, they just pay the 50% normal cost.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, one question. This breakdown has all been approved by each of the affected bargaining units, correct?
Yes, they've all been notified.
I need it. Thank you.
And, and just a quick question. So there's clarification. There's no change in any contracts. This is simply procedural based upon our PERS relationship and existing contracts.
Correct.
Correct. All right. The only thing that could potentially change is in future negotiations at the direction of the council in, in labor negotiations. This is what comes up during regular negotiations, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. I know up to the public, if there's any questions from the public that wants to address this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. And I don't see that, there's a couple more comments here.
I have a comment. I was to make a motion.
Motion. Anybody have a comment left or just motion? Yeah, we have a question. Councilmember Chapman, then Councilmember Stockton, I'll go to you for a motion unless there's some.
Thank you. What percentage do not participate in the cost share? What percentage of the employees, city employees?
Citywide.
Or groups do not?
Currently, the breakdown, ours, in our safety groups, the PEPRA new employees do not have a cost share. Their amount is, is higher. We have a breakdown here of the groups that do have cost share. Dimple, would you?
So for the cost share, we have AMG, department heads, and VMO. So the three bargaining groups that have cost share for the PEPRA members. And then we have our safety groups. And again, the classic members for department heads, AMG, and VMO, who have a cost share as well, but they're not impacted by this contract amendment. It only applies to the PEPRA members.
So with that, Councilmember Stockton, you were going to make a motion? Okay, you make a motion to adopt a subject resolution and by title only introduce the subject ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Do I have a second? You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, can we read this into the ordinance title for PERS item?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Vacaville authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Vacaville and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System to amend current section 20516, employees sharing additional cost amounts for all new local miscellaneous members in the Vacaville Managers Organization Unrepresented Administrative Managers Group and Unrepresented Department Heads.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Moving on, we will move to item nine, business A. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This next item before you is an update on the city's efforts to bring a broadband master plan to our community. We have several members of our team here. I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Georgia Ann Meggersmith, to kick things off.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. A quick background on our broadband initiatives to date. In June of 2021, the city was awarded an Economic Development Administration grant to hire a consultant to prepare a master plan for the development of a citywide broadband network. The master plan was really the first step in creating a roadmap for how to improve fiber access for public facilities and infrastructure to improve fiber access in key commercial areas to build on our economic advantage and attract job creating businesses, and to address the digital divide, as one in five California residents still don't have access to affordable, reliable broadband internet service. In September 2022, with the help of Magellan Advisors, the master plan was completed. And we turned around and leveraged that plan to secure a grant of just under $500,000 through the California Public Utilities Commission for phase two of our broadband effort, which is the Digital Infrastructure Design and Implementation Plan. Tonight, I have Keith McDonald with me, our IT Division Manager, who's been working closely with Rika Guidry, our Program Manager, and Greg Lottman from Magellan on both the master plan and preparing for phase two. I'll now turn it over to Greg, who will walk you through the master plan process and what to expect from the next phase.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to visit with you here in Vacaville and do this really important, exciting work for you. So I'm going, I've got a lot to cover, so I'm going to whisk through it pretty briskly. Feel free to stop me at any point and ask questions. So basically, I'd like to start out with just the rationale for what we're doing, and talk a little bit about what we've done so far, where we're going next, and dig into that in a little bit of detail. And then finally, just kind of finish up with some information about our company and contact information. So, oh, I'm sorry, rearranged it. Company stuff's up front. So Magellan is a broadband consultancy. We have been working in this area as a team since the 2010s. I've personally been with them since 2015, but my experience goes way back into the 80s and 90s when people just made bad jokes about broadband and didn't really know what it was. We recently were acquired by Entrust Solutions Group, a diversified engineering firm, and really expands our capacity. So just to give you a little bit of their team, I'm now officially the Director of Broadband and Smart City Planning for Magellan Entrust. And working with Jory Wolf, who is our VP of Innovation, former CIO in Santa Monica, we have a great team. And really, who you see up here is just the tip of the iceberg for the whole Entrust organization that backs us up. So what we're here to talk about tonight is really exactly what we were talking about early in a lot of ways, connectivity and resilience. It's really about extending what the city has done into a whole new dimension in a lot of ways. So just real quickly, not to get into any of the technical details, but we, what we were talking about is the new infrastructure that literally connects everything and everywhere, and makes information flow that enables people to make better decisions, improve their quality of life, and really just be free and happy and prosperous. A couple of things to note about this. So first, if you'll know in this diagram, that everything's connected. So when you see a cell tower or talking on your cell phone, that infrastructure interconnects with all the other infrastructure. And that's a really important part of this, that anybody on the network can connect with anybody else on the network. And then the other thing to point out about it is the rings. Because we telecom geeks like to build networks and rings for a very simple reason, because if a backhoe comes along or something else and breaks that ring, the ring traffic wraps back around on itself and it keeps running. So again, really what we're talking about here is just what you've heard about earlier today from the presentations. It's extending it into a new world, better connectivity, greater resilience. So why invest in broadband? There are so many reasons, but the fundamental reason is that this is critical infrastructure that the city pays to use day in and day out, that your operations depend on it. Economic development depends on it. For example, right now, you're looking at bringing in a lot of investment by advanced manufacturing and biotech, pharma. Those companies live and breathe, almost literally, by their network connectivity. So it is absolutely essential for that. We look at this also as an economic development initiative to attract other providers. We look at them as targeted industries, just like you would any other targeted industry. And not least important is that there is a lot of money currently out there to do this work, particularly through the state of California. They have a LADA grant that you were just awarded, and that's what we're looking to start on next. And then they have funding to actually build the last mile infrastructure, which is where we're heading, and literally where I'm heading here in just a moment. So the result of this project will be a very practical, detailed plan for how to build out this new infrastructure, and not only build it out, but integrate it with everything that we heard about earlier today. The Public Works infrastructure, this becomes a new element of it. It's going to require new capabilities, a little bit new, different way of thinking, but very much in line with the practices that you have in the past, and the same for other operations, and particularly building services, making sure that buildings are connected and, you know, literally have smart infrastructure built into them. So as you're thinking about how to invest in broadband, it's really important to take a very comprehensive and engaged approach. It's not the way it was done traditionally. When I got into telecom, we would just build networks wherever we pleased, and nobody had said anything about it except our management and our shareholders. We've come to understand that this is much more than just telephone service. This is really about your access to the world. So we, again, feel a very comprehensive approach, really focusing at a high level on what are the needs in the community, what are the opportunities? So needs being, what are the services that are available, what do members of the community want to accomplish, what are the operational requirements for the city itself? And then the opportunities are related to your assets, to your culture, to funding streams. And really, a lot of what it comes down to is just political will and leadership. We've seen this over and over again, that the communities that really excel in this network infrastructure are the ones that have the visionary, disciplined leadership, and the ones that don't move forward so fast that it's a little bit more challenging for them to get wrap their heads around it. And I'm really pleased to see the level of leadership and vision in this community to embrace this and understand how it fits with other utilities and help the community move ahead. So what we did in phase one was basically all those steps I just showed you, we went through and we looked at your strategic plan to understand what your priorities were, did a broad survey of the community, talked to all kinds of stakeholders across the community, looked at the existing assets, not only network related assets, cell towers, but also your capital improvement plan, et cetera. What is the market doing? And last, we really looked at various routes for putting this infrastructure, because it's literally fiber cables that run down the side of the road or attach the utility poles, to understand where the most impact would be. So we got really good results from the survey. Matter of fact, you guys just blew it out of the water. I have to give credit where credit is due on your staff, and particularly Rika, just did an amazing job. We got 916 responses. Most of those were complete, which is a really unusual thing, that people actually make it all the way through the end of the survey. And got some really interesting results. One of the things I want you to look at is the far right hand column. And that is, you know, we measure broadband in megabits per second. So, you know, today, the kind of typical basic broadband by the FCC is 25 megabits upstream and 5 megabits downstream. That is not enough to really do a video call. It's barely enough to surf the web and check email. And typically, you don't actually even get that amount of speed. And folks are paying 45, 50 bucks a month sometimes for this low grade service. So if you do the math there, they're paying around $7 or $8 a month per megabit per second. The nationally competitive price is around 30 cents per megabit per second per month. And when you have fiber optic connectivity, it's kind of ironic that you end up paying more per month, but the bandwidth, the amount of information you can move through it, it's so much greater that that price per megabit per second per month drops below 10 cents. So not only do the folks that have fiber have kind of an edge just in the speed and the amount of information that they access, they are getting a much more economical value, much greater value for their dollar. So that's one of the reasons that we're big believers in fiber optics. Think, basically, this simple statistical analysis says that there is some big opportunities here. And just to kind of show how this profile works is, on the left hand chart, anyone that's below 120 megabits per second is below the state's new standard. So the state's standard is you should be able to get 100 megabits per second upstream and 20 megabits per second downstream to qualify as having real broadband. And, you know, that's really barely sufficient if you think about it in actual use, particularly when you have multiple devices and users. So what you can see is that there's a pretty heavy skew towards the lower end. Yeah, a lot of folks are just below the standard for the state, but still not up to stuff. And then on the right, you can see, you know, if you think about that three cent, the 30 cents per megabit per second as being the competitive rate, you know, you're seeing a lot of folks here that are paying well more than that competitive rate. And it gets really high. And some folks, you know, paying easily over 15, $20 per megabit per second. So here are the survey results. And what I'm going to do is just roll with this right into some of the early planning for you. So what you want to look at here, particularly the lighter green and red dots, and you notice they're pretty widely scattered around the community, but particularly concentrated in the south and southeast and kind of a, almost an arc around the southern end of the community. So when we did the first phase, along with the survey, like I mentioned, we looked at various fiber routes. So this gives you an idea of the fiber routes that we analyzed for what you could reach with the technology and the areas that would be covered. So we did a pretty extensive analysis across the community, as you can see. And then what we did is thought, based on what we can connect over distance, what should we phase? So this is basically what we came up with. And not to make it overly simple, but the strategy we recommend for developing your network infrastructure is through, around, within, and then beyond. The through being the blue corridor along Monte Vista and El Myra, basically intersecting the center of the city. You can connect not only this facility, a lot of other municipal facilities, the new corporate yard, a lot of cultural locations. But it also gives you a lot of coverage right in the middle of the city as your backbone. The around, phase two, would be the purple that would build a fiber ring all the way around the city that would push bandwidth out into the neighborhoods, but also give you a huge amount of reliability, very high resilience. Phase three would be to create smaller sub-rings within the city. And again, that pushes the bandwidth deeper into the neighborhoods and provides additional capacity and resilience. And then phase four would be beyond, which is up into the Northeast Growth District area, as you can see. Now, are these? Now, are these necessarily phased in this order? No. And again, these are entire corridors, so it's not that we would develop an entire corridor at one time. We'd probably develop a very focused area. But this general approach, I think it's simple and just makes a huge amount of sense. So the question is, well, how do you execute on that? So bear with me for one more map here, if you would please. These are the data points from the California Public Utilities Commission, new broadband maps. And the red, the little red dots on there, as you can see, are their priority locations. And then the yellow dots, there's quite a few of those too, not as prominent as the red, are the eligible locations. So in the next round of funding, this last mile funding, the state of California is going to dump a lot of money into building infrastructure in neighborhoods, to houses. Those red dots are the target that you have to hit. And then along with those, you can see all the community anchor institutions, your schools, healthcare, et cetera, those folks that you want to get connected also. And the exciting thing that I love about this, that when I threw this up, it was like, wow, that you'll notice that phase one, that goes through the center of the city, and phase two, and particularly the purple route along the south end of the city, which I believe is along Alamo Drive, lines up very well with a lot of red dots and a lot of community anchor institutions. So matter of fact, I think it's almost like a string of beads that they laid out and the opportunity is just to connect them all. So that's really where the phase of, phase two is, the focus of phase two is, the context is the priorities you set forth in your strategic plan. We will be working to address every one of these directly with the infrastructure investment. The goals are really to give everybody connectivity, but also really to attract new investment. So we see the broadband providers, again, as targeted industry. It's great to have one or two of them, but wouldn't you rather have three or four or five? So let's get out there and figure out how to bring them into the community. One way to do that is to reduce their capital costs, their cost of doing business by basically providing them the infrastructure they need to reach their customers. And then the other thing that this will do for you that I think is as important as any of it, is that it establishes a platform for the city to develop new products and services. What exactly do those look like? Well, you know, you can talk to your police officers and they can tell you the technologies that they need in order to respond to calls. You can talk to your, your building inspectors and they can tell you about the systems that they need. But even beyond that, like I said, you can almost think of this as expanding your real estate, your municipal spaces into a whole new dimension. What can you put in that dimension? That's going to be what's exciting. That's what's coming next, and that's the technologies that you'll be able to deploy on top of this network. So what we're doing here is really for some focused areas where we feel it's very likely that we can get state funding to build last mile, we'll be doing very detailed engineering designs. Those are basically shovel-ready. They're ready to go to an RFP and hire somebody to do construction. We'll also be looking at the operational requirements. So once you build this network, what does it take to light it up and get people connected? That's not something that's in the city's bailiwick. That's something we're going to have to find a private partner to do for you. So understanding those requirements, that you can negotiate a good deal with that private provider and then hold their feet to the fire is just really important step. We'll be looking at the various financing options, not to throw the alphabet soup of public monies out there, but there's, there's quite a big pot, including ongoing state programs, these current round of federal-funded state programs, and then additional federal funds for various projects from building infrastructure to doing training, to helping people get devices. So we'll be working with you on proposals to go after all of those funding sources as well. So like I mentioned, we're doing the really the high level, the high-level design for the entire community, getting down to a low-level design, very detailed for specific areas really makes sense. The final design is really when it's built, you know, the red line, the design to say done and hand it off to public works or whoever's managing it. And then, of course, I'll build material so you can actually go out and quote the work and get RFPs. We'll be doing the partnership negotiations and help you identify the partners and get them on board to invest in the community and use the network. So I'm just going to kind of run through this. It's in your packet. You're welcome to look at it, ask questions. Like I said, we are doing a lot of design work and figuring out exactly where network infrastructure should go. But really, again, it comes back to your priorities, what you think is important based on your strategic plan. So there's kind of a whole list of potential opportunities here, from providing broadband services to making the partnerships arrangements, setting milestones, and we're going to do the, all of this with your input, with your guidance as we're moving along the way. This is about a six, seven-month project, pretty intensive. Hope to kick it off here in the next month or so. We'll be doing a lot of the initial design work right off the bat and refining it, and then doing partnership identification and negotiation in parallel with that. Any questions?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation. Couple of quick things. This creates the network or the ring, so it's a seven-month process. Total construction time for, is it for up through a single phase, two phases, or all four phases?
So this project itself will be about a six-month project, but then, once you get into construction, that would typically be an 18 to 24-month project, depending on the scale of it and, you know, other things. Like it's been a very busy time for broadband construction, so there's been a little bit of delay with team, with contractors and materials. But yeah, about an 18 to 24-month period to actually get construction done.
And then the ultimate goal is the last mile, where you can take a fiber resilient network and then broadband it out, because I can't imagine it going to every house initially, unless it's a neighborhood, but.
Yeah, exactly. And again, the two inputs to that is the will of council and what we can get partners interested in. Of course, partner, the private partners will want to go after the most affluent locations where they can make good margins. So the opportunity is to have a balanced negotiation where, you know, you can go after the areas that are in your sweet spot, but you also need to make sure you're serving the folks that aren't.
And do you find that cities that actually go down this path, find a successful partnership where they provide both a residential last mile and also business?
Oh, yes, definitely. I mean, we've seen just an amazing range of partnerships, and that's kind of part of the beauty of it, is that through a little bit of persistence and, you know, like you said, this is very much an economic development initiative. I encourage you to look at it that way. So you have to have a great team as well as a great product and just really plug away at it. But we see that folks can build partnerships that not only are successful, but really uniquely fit their communities.
Well, thank you. I'm going to open it up to the council for any more questions. Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you very much for your presentation. In one of your earlier slides, and I failed to put the number, where you were talking about the, the low broadband, like at one time I was at five a few minutes, a few months ago and had to change carriers because I, I kept getting weak connection and probably others here as well. And then, okay, not this one, the one where you showed the state, yeah, this, okay. We have new development here, a lot of it here in Vacaville, and I know of some individuals who cannot get any reception in their home, and they've had their provider come out time and time again. Is, I really don't know how to, how to compose this question. With new development and knowing that the homeowners are going, have a need to be connected, how can we have fiber put in at that time?
That is a great question, because that is a great time to put the fiber in. Yeah, one of the, we have a whole kind of set of what we call broadband smart policies that we recommend, and one of them is conditioning developments with conduit and fiber. So because one, really 80% of the cost of the construction is just putting the conduit in the ground. But of course, it's best to go ahead and put the fiber in with it and the cost of the development and then have deeded over to the city or to an entity that would be managing the infrastructure.
A question based upon that is, is that we already know that there is some fiber connectivity in, in the community. Is part of this process also understanding where we can, we can take an advantage of where we're going and where we don't need to go, even though the goal is, is new development should be conditioned for it. Makes no sense not to, especially the up and down connectivity. Not every, not every residential neighborhood, especially if it's older, has the ability to have that, and yet a lot of newer neighborhoods can get it, get a fiber or out of Comcast, but options I think are really, they're good. So with that, Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the information. I know there's a lot of talk about fiber, but also with the progression technology with wireless. How does that play into this and with the private, because I know most of those are private towers? Because I know my phone itself pulls 600, 800.
Exactly. And yeah, most people connect via fiber, via wireless today. I mean, somewhere it's all connected, it goes back to the fiber, that's the backbone. But just in practical terms, yes, wireless is incredibly important. The other thing with wireless is it is evolving very rapidly. There's been a lot of talk about 5G. 5G is just now really starting to hit in some select places. Again, the providers invest based on who knows what whim, but you can work, and again, this is where we know some communities have been very successful aggressively going with, after the providers and say, we have the fiber, we have the locations, we need you to come and deploy this infrastructure so we can get the connectivity. So wireless is definitely a very, very important part of it. The caveat there is that the California Public Utility Commission is big on fiber. So if they're going to fund last mile infrastructure, unless you can show a very strong economic reason or technical reason, otherwise, they are looking for fiber investment. So go where the money is.
And fiber does have to be undergrounded, correct?
No, it can be on, over aerial on, on poles, or it can be underground. Really, a lot of dependencies, just driving through town today, I noticed you have a lot of pole infrastructure and it's really pretty heavily loaded. We generally recommend underground just because resilience purposes and/or having mix, so you have some underground overhead, basically. So, you know, overhead's exposed to wildfires, underground's exposed to seismic, so.
I know, um, yeah, being above ground, I know fiber is more brittle than, say, coax with the high winds we have here.
They make the stuff so tough today, it's almost ridiculous, the technology they've built into the physical infrastructure. It's very, very resilient.
Okay, yeah, because I just look at the, the map for the different phases. I know some of those are older neighborhoods where nothing is undergrounded. And yeah, there's some issues there. I mean, I know some people have run into poles recently in some of those areas, which caused power outages and other outages. So that's another aspect where.
Well, we are very bullish on integrated approaches. Again, going back to the discussion about Public Works Week and, you know, building safety, we believe this infrastructure needs to be built into everything. There's some amazing things you can do with it on sensing and connectivity, of course, that really enable public works to be more efficient, effective, and again, just kind of extend it into a new realm. But one thing in particular is any opportunity to underground utilities or even roadwork, sidewalks. Let's build fiber when you're doing that, too.
And one last question, not necessarily on the broadband plan itself, but because you have a good understanding of this, not being able to create like monopolies of service in certain areas, how does that play factors? I know, for example, in my neighborhood, you can only get Comcast or Xfinity in there, and the prices in my neighborhood are significantly higher than one, like two blocks away where you have Comcast and AT&amp;T.
Right, yeah. So the situation we're in today is each company owns its own infrastructure, and so that's very much like owning the port. You know, if you want to come in, you've got to go through them. And, and that's fine. That's a, you know, that's private enterprise. But if we can create a space in which other providers don't have to necessarily own the infrastructure, and a lot of technology companies have figured this out, that, you know, capital assets isn't where it's all at. Just, you know, look at Amazon and Google's market capitalization versus AT&amp;T or Verizon. So if the city has to have this critical infrastructure for its operations in order to control its own costs to support its anchor institutions, then why not have the private sector come in and build on top of that to offer more options, more competitive options, more innovative and cost-effective options to the community?
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thanks for the information. And on the, one of the slides where you talked about the survey results, I'm glad we got a lot of survey responses, that you said like 60% of them came from the 87 side on the zip code. So do you know what's our population? How much, I mean, do we have that many more people on 87 or 88, or are they kind of evenly split? I know you probably don't know, but some of our city staff might know.
We just kind of hit with the high points. We do have a very detailed statistical analysis of the respondents versus the population. We can give you that detail.
I don't know what the breakdown is, though. So I just wondered, were there more people in the 87 side, which I didn't expect? Or was, did the 88 side already have more things for broadband that 87 doesn't? So that's why maybe fewer people were responding to the survey? Because when you did the other map that showed the red dots, there were a lot of red dots on the 87 side and not as many on the 88 side. So I was just wondering if they had more coverage than we do on the 87 side.
Well, and I do know that one of the fundamental issues with surveys, and I wish I could miraculously come up with a better way to do this, is that oddly enough, more affluent, better educated folks are more likely to complete surveys. So we try to control for that by comparing the survey demographics to the population demographics. And yeah, we consistently see that survey respondents have more education and more professional level employment. And so, you know, one of the key things that we need to do moving forward is ensure that we're getting out and engaging all aspects of the community to make them aware of the options and to understand what their needs and opportunities are.
And in addition to just answering the survey, they also have the access and have the consistent broadband for their kids to do their homework and everything else, whereas that's why we need to make it available to every, everyone. And so then I was also going to ask about the power outages, because we in, you know, my neighborhood often have power outages for this or that or the other. And, you know, you think you're doing something on the computer and all of a sudden you have no coverage. So is that affected by fiber optics or not so much, or what?
I'm not going to go down a rabbit hole as much as I'm tempted to, but the solution, one of the most important solutions to the power situation is called microgrids, which is allowing neighborhoods to basically operate independently of the overall grid. Guess what microgrids need to operate?
Fiber optics.
That's right.
All right. And so then my next thing is just, you know, looking at the map and here's phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. When that's finished, is there going to be some whole new thing? Because that's the way technology is, you know, you just get it and then there's something new.
Yes, I can almost guarantee you there is, but we're building the foundation for whatever comes next. That's, I think, the key thing here is that fiber has a great history, but it also has great future-proof characteristics. Whatever comes along, the next generation of quantum computing is going to use fiber. And so you will have a very solid foundation to build on for the long-term future.
And it is really important to the residents, reliable and attainable coverage that they can have to cover all their health things. Thank you.
Councilmember Sill.
Yeah, all great questions, great points. Thanks for the presentation and overview. Just kind of, just take a step back and kind of clarify, how do we balance that, the economic development component? So we have a strong, so for example, we have a strong initiative to, to get more biotech or biomanufacturing, advanced manufacturing businesses here. How do we, how do we have that, but at the same time, address the access to? How do we? How do we have that, but on the same time address the access to Internet for education purposes and job training purposes and application purposes and so forth?
Yeah, that is an excellent question and they actually dovetail. I mean, it's really one two punch. You really can't have one without the other. So yeah, you need the connectivity for the advanced manufacturing biotech next generation industry. But it's when the kids get connected and get excited and really understand the potential. It's, you know, it's literally life changing and puts them on track to be employed in those industries. So yeah, it's really important to have grassroots outreach. Starting point is just connecting the community centers and having connected programs through the community centers with digital navigators, et cetera. There are some amazing programs out there. We can help you look at them. Most of them really are not very expensive and they really make great use of community resources, particularly technologists as volunteers and mentors. So yeah, those are, you know, we're just again, building the foundation. It's those kind of things that allow you just to build amazing things on top of that foundation.
So with the like, for example, phase one with that one map. So along Montevista, overwhelming majority of that with the exception to the west part of Montevista will be commercial. So how far but how far in the the roads that branch off of Montevista with this current proposed phase reach?
That is to be determined with your input, but there's at least trying to remember off the top of my head now, four major recreational facilities along that corridor that would would or could be easily connected.
So we're targeting primarily city owned property?
Yes, and community anchor institutions, schools. Well, the schools have pretty good connectivity already, but community based organizations, healthcare. Yes.
I don't, I don't, I need to verify, but I will say two, three years ago, some schools, they would have, if you had two classrooms next to one another, one class, both classrooms would not be able to access Internet at the mutual time. And on top of that, fifty percent of the classroom in itself can only access the Internet at the time. And so while I don't want kids on the screen more time than than they need to be, unfortunately, a lot of different services and that's kind of that's how it's where it's shaped out to be in in certain situations. So I guess I'm not sure that this right here captures that that aspect. If, you know, again, and I mentioned, I need to verify if that's been improved.
Yeah, we actually dig into that a little bit in the full report with some really good input from the schools. But the situation that you find is that the schools right now have really good connectivity through a federal program called E-Rate. But the ironic thing is that the providers ran fiber directly out to that school and passed by all the neighborhoods. And once it's at the school, it can only be used for school purposes. So even your your resource officers that are located at the schools can't get connectivity because they can't use the school's network. And then the other issue with that goes back to the resilience thing. It's at the end of a long piece of fiber. If that fiber is cut, that school is out. So if we can build a ring and not only provide connectivity for other purposes at the school, including be able to set up, for example, a wireless Internet service provider that would serve the surrounding homes. You also can build a lot more resilience and and extra bandwidth in for the schools themselves.
I get so in one instance, power went out in my residence, had some things to turn in deadlines, tried to access the school site that was advertised that, hey, this is free access. It wasn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get enough juice to tap it. I was fortunate to access, went somewhere else. I knew where to go a few miles away. And, you know, that's where I sat for six hours. But, uh, so so in this, just to clarify, this this provides opportunities to increase that access throughout. And it's not just a checkbox to say, hey, you have sufficient Internet access. But in reality, you know, we ended up paying millions of dollars for something that, you know, we have an opportunity for.
Yeah, the goal is to get people connected, give them options, lower their costs, raise their speed. But again, I think there's a lot of other opportunities that it's a great platform to build on. For example, we've seen some communities do grassroots community networks in which high school students basically build the network and go out there and get their neighbors connected. You know, there's all kinds of amazing things you can do with it.
So if there's a strip of businesses that constantly have a gap in service, so limited, limited, reliable Internet and decreased access to affordable Internet services to support their business or their other economic development endeavors. Is that something that they themselves need to come together to advocate for, to incorporate?
It's always good, but businesses are the toughest to engage. If you can mobilize your businesses to get really serious about taking advantage of this technology, that would be a major coup. And and yes, it can provide them a huge competitive advantage. But the simple reality is most business people are just heads down, keeping the doors open. And they don't have time to step back necessarily and think about, well, how do I digitally transform my business? You know, could do wonderful things, but it requires a lot of work and time that they don't necessarily have. So, you know, providing community resources to support that, you know, we've seen some great programs with that, too.
And then last question. More technical side I'm not too familiar with. So if we run it, I kind of ask in a different way, but if we run a fiber optic, so like this, one of these routes. So from there, it would go to broadband possibly. Is that is that right? And so like, what radius would that still be impactful?
So yeah, broadband is just basically a service that you offer over it. You know, it's high speed Internet services and you know what broadband has come to mean. But there's a kind of a whole range of services you could possibly provide on top of the broadband or in addition to the broadband. The key is that what we're looking at here in this is the backbone infrastructure. It's the feeder network. From that, you have to add distribution and access infrastructure that goes into actual folks' homes. It's about a twelve, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollar cost to add a home. If the all the other infrastructure is in place, it's about eight thousand dollars altogether. If you have more density, you can lower those costs. Like I said, wireless is the future and wireless is even, you know, a fraction of the cost of that. So there's a lot of different ways that you can slice and dice it. But the key thing is that that's where we're looking for that private investment. For them, the private companies to come in and actually engage the consumers and put in that last hundred feet to get them connected to the network.
Thank you.
And with that, do you anticipate in some of the backbone where it's difficult and the cost prohibitive? Can you speak to how the public private enterprise can work so that last mile can actually be achieved wirelessly through a backbone at a lower cost? I think that's the key. Sometimes what we hear from from residents in any experience that you've heard is, okay, that's great. It's hundred feet from here and it's going to cost an enormous amount. But to to have that partnership with the, you know, with a third party enterprise and contract. Say, here's our backbone.
Right.
It allows us to move into different directions.
Yeah, sure. And there's a couple of different ways that we approach that. One is just inherent fixed wireless, particularly T-Mobile is really deploying a lot of that. But we see a lot of smaller companies, wireless Internet service providers focusing in that space. So it can be a standalone service on its own. The other thing that we oftentimes do is use it in a phased manner. So for locations that are farther out, less economical to serve, we start by connecting them via wireless. And then as the infrastructure evolves and the resources become available, the development happens, then you can push fiber out to those wireless customers and redeploy the wireless. And then the third model is really just wireless as an overlay. Because again, you know, everybody connects via wireless. So you you buy the service, you get a fiber connection and you get a wireless connection. And it gives you a lot of extra flexibility, both in terms of the customer, but also in terms of how you're deploying your infrastructure. As a matter of fact, oftentimes what they're doing is they're using the infrastructure they provide to the customer to provide services to wireless services to other customers.
And can you explain how this could be an advantage to the city of Vacaville owning the backbone and partnering under contract with the cellular providers and its financial benefit to the city?
Yeah, so the city of Vacaville benefits financially in a number of ways. First of all, just directing investment. So it's not a direct financial benefit, but the as using this mechanism, you can say, we need to make sure the infrastructure reaches these areas that you might not be real keen to serve. The assets can be leased directly, either on a short term monthly lease or on a long term capital lease. Long term capital lease gives a better bargain, but a larger chunk of money upfront. And we'll often see joint build opportunities that are structured in this way. There's also opportunities for asset swaps. So essentially a provider says, you let me use your conduit. I'm going to put in some fiber for you and give you that fiber. So that again, that's not a direct monetary financial benefit, but it's a very significant financial benefit in terms of assets. And then the other model that we often see is where there's some level of service provisioning and the provider is paying a portion of their revenue. So if it's like a residential Internet service provider, for example, wireless provider, they might charge thirty dollars per month for connection and they're going to give the city five or 10% of that, depending on, of course, how it's negotiated, et cetera. And then there's also the opportunities to get in kind services, so public wifi. Wouldn't you like to be able to provide public wifi all over the community, not necessarily have to manage it? That's the kind of thing you can get a partner to do for you.
And as far as the.
Oh, and I should, I'm sorry, I should emphasize that not least of this is greatly reducing your monthly costs. So in the report, we look at the monthly cost just to connect your sites. And for the amount of bandwidth you're getting, yeah, you can greatly increase your bandwidth, increase your resilience and reduce your costs.
Just a simple answer explanation, how you decided the phases? Did you, was this also based upon what were key infrastructure and also easements?
Yeah, the this is very simple analysis. Basically, we just looked at entire corridors and then said, if we connected everything within a certain buffer along this corridor, seven hundred and fifty feet, how many sites would we get connected? How many anchor institutions? And then we just kind of phased them based on the number. So the the denser, the more locations that get connected, the the higher we phase them for this purpose. But that's all going to change in the next iteration.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you so much for the presentation. The timeliness of this is great as we're heading out for a biotech conference tomorrow to represent city of Vacaville on the main stage to really make sure we kind of hammer down the biotech corridor. Vacaville is this kind of the the center of everything at this point for us. It seemed like my notes, the first initial process is getting a lot of grant funding. And so is the main goal to get grant funding to basically build the first infrastructure of the ring? At what point does the grant funding stop? And where the private parties come to the table and say, hey, in order to finish the transaction, you now need to negotiate with us. So let's say we commit a project with state funds to build the ring. At what point are we now obligated to kind of finish over the end zone? By now, private party comes in. Now, is that a, is that unintended negotiation where they now know we need them? Right. We start the process. We spend other people's money. Now we have to go in for required to negotiate with private private companies that know that, too. So that's obviously a part of the the standard operating procedure. But at what point do you see kind of any kind of usage where they charge a higher fee because they know we need them now to finish it? And then once we get to that point, the cost, the cost savings essentially, and Silva cleared it up. The first initial phase is going to be for non residential city services and business. So my question is actually to Don. Have we talked to the biotech to ensure like, hey, how much do they need this? So therefore, we are going to make an investment in our city's future by building the ring that will serve the city government and private, major private companies, then the smaller companies. So we can get together, back to chamber, hang everybody's button gear. But the big companies would be biggest beneficiaries, biotech, Islamic Community College. But this is must be, I would love to maybe hear from Don quickly. How essential is this besides having water, electricity, but having fiber optics? If we have great fiber optics, but don't have electricity, they could pass this up. That made me nervous where it's like, it's like business. Once they know you, they got you. Do they negotiate? Are we at a loss? Are we be committed to working with a private company and have a worse rate or not as good as expected for the companies and residents in the end?
Good evening, Mayor Carley, councilmembers. When we started this process, we actually did reach out to, we did quite a bit of reach out to the business community, very specifically to the biotech companies and to the advanced manufacturers. Of course, they were all elated that we were going down this path because right now, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's only one actual hub that's in our industrial parks. And very few companies were able to access that. Icon Aircraft is one of them that was able to access that. So they do push and pardon me again, Keith, for saying this phrase, but everyone pushes big data now. So there is a lot of information that flows. So the broadband is almost a necessity for these businesses to survive. When it comes to the biotech companies, a lot of them are actually using satellite service because we don't have the broadband connectivity. And that in itself can be a little problematic depending on the time of day and satellite usage. So again, this is critical for both biotech and advanced manufacturing. For the advanced manufacturers we have in town, their data is, I won't say it's more critical. They push a little bit more now because they're operating CNC equipment and all of that data is all cloud based now. So when they're telling their robotic equipment to make their products that they're making here in Vacaville, all the information is coming from the cloud. If there's a glitch or if it slows down, then it slows down their production. Before we applied for the grant, we had a consortia that was created in the business park without us as a city. The businesses got together and preparing to come and lobby the city to do broadband because they were letting us know it was affecting the productivity and profitability of their businesses.
That's great. So with that exchange, the in kind services also has opportunity where if we make the investment, that's going to allow the biotech to come to Vacaville. We're going to save them a horrendous amount of money by after the fact, they have to then do their own little microgrid.
Absolutely. It's a value add for for both industries.
So could we look at the reduction? If we're going to give a big value add, could they give us an in kind service? So therefore neighborhoods could get connected. If we if we can have a margin, so we're going to sell it back, you know, five, five dollars per this and that. If we can have certain portion of that in kind service that can allow for ease of access of connectivity at a lower rate or free for people that need it.
I got you. So in kind service is part of a community benefit. I'm happy to have that conversation if the city manager and council would like me to direct me to do that.
Well, I think it's, everything is, you know, open to the discussion. And I think this was just to get feedback tonight. So I think that that comment is taken. From one council member, not necessarily from.
Councilmember Ritchie, I think the answer to the first part of your question was in the second part of your question. Because as you're working with those providers, they want to be serving Don's customers. And we use that as leverage to get them to invest where we need them to invest in order to accomplish other public priorities so that then they can get access to the the accounts that they really want to get connected to.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's seems like connectivity, water and power are the three main things to have business, any kind of business come to Vacaville, especially at this skill level. It's like trying to land Jumbo Jet on on a dirt field. It's not going to work out too well. So if we don't have the basic things to make them profitable and work, why would they come here? So we want the revenue. We need to give, we need to have an, I mean, especially since it's not our money, it's it's grant money. It's a good time to start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick. If you could just speak to the value that it has to city services. I, for a long time, I've heard you tell me over and over again from a public safety, infrastructure, communications redundancy. But I think it'd just be important to hear from you because every time I've talked. But I think it'd just be important to hear from you because every time I've talked to you over the years, it's, we need, we need fiber, we need fiber. And so here you are.
Right. And like I said, right now is an absolutely marvelous time to be getting into the space because of all the money that's out there that can be had to make this a reality. And again, we're selling as another utility, like sewer, water, power, broadband, and then reducing or eliminating our costs that connect all of our vital buildings, the fire stations, community, development areas, all the different assets that we have out there right now that we're paying AT&amp;T and Comcast loads of money for.
Will save money a lot.
Yeah, very much so. And get that speed that where it needs to be. We're also working with, with Public Works and Traffic. They're, they're working on their, their signaling master plan, and this is overlaying nicely with what they're doing. And they're excited about the potential, potential of having these rings set into the city. So the value is there and pretty exciting that we could have all these different things lay on top of the core infrastructure, which this is laying out essentially. And then this is a legacy project. This will continue to bear fruit and provide opportunities well after we're all gone. This is like the starting gate and that's what's really super exciting about this. And then being our masters of our own destiny essentially, and not have to rely on Comcast or AT&amp;T or the other big corporations out there for the basic services that will help with the, the underserved, the houseless and all those other things that we touched on during the presentation. So, so you have a wide range of benefits here for this fiber network as well as we're working with, I've been talking to the county as well as other agencies. And they have their own initiatives going on. We're all kind of working in the same way within our own agencies, building out these networks. Some people are a little bit further along the, the road. Some people are starting from a greenfield like us. And also the state's building that 10,000 mile network across the state. And they're looking at agencies like us to connect to that larger state. They're calling it the Golden State Network essentially. And they are, they have workbooks and whatnot that will help the permitting process to streamline that. Because can you imagine trying to build a fiber network across the entire state, hundreds and hundreds permits? They've got that down to a handful of permits now. And so there's a lot of resources at the state level too, that will help us along this journey essentially. I'm pretty excited about it.
Thanks. It sounds like the timing is good. So with that, appreciate the presentation. I'm going to open up to the public if there's anyone who wants to comment on this. Being closed, public comment. I think you probably heard a lot about the feedback, exciting for this. Do we have somebody?
No, just clarification.
Yes.
Sorry, just a clarification. Are you, so is there any information that you're seeking clarification from us or more direction on?
I think tonight we were just looking, we wanted to, A, fill you in on some of the work we've been doing behind the scenes with the master plan and then just to get some feedback from you. So nothing specific and no action required. It's informational. We'll be coming back to you as we dig in and to make sure our, we're aligning with the council's goals.
And sorry, so when's the timeline where we go out for money?
The last mile funding is supposed to open in June. The state folks are working very assiduously on lots of fronts. So I would, I'm not sure when the closing for it will be, but it'll probably be later this year. The key thing is that we work with a lot of communities around California and y'all are as far along as anyone. So most communities are not ready to go after this funding. We're going to do everything we can to accelerate the process and do that in parallel with the actual planning, which is going to be interesting to be writing proposals for something we haven't fully planned yet, but we'll figure that out. So we are hoping to get the wheels in motion in June for the last mile funding and really go seriously after in July, August timeframe.
Thank you for the presentation. This was, that we've received and we will move on and look forward to the, what comes back to us in RFP and let's not lose out on that money. Yeah, thank you. Mr. City Manager, item B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This next item before you is a two-part presentation on the city's budget. The first part of the presentation will be an update on our third quarter activities, followed by an update on your first part of the fiscal 24 year presentation on the budget. So with that, we'll turn it over to our budget team led by Ken Matsumiya, who's going to kick things off.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Next slide, please. As the city manager mentioned, tonight is a two-parter. The very first part, we're going to be presenting our final update of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2022, 23, and going over the results and our projections based off of how things are tracking through third quarter. So as part of that first part of our presentation, we'll be going over the general fund budget and projected revenues, the revenue trends through quarter three. So that's through March 31st of 2023. We do have one proposed budget augmentation for fiscal year 23 that we'll be discussing as well. And then finally, for that first part of the presentation, we'll be giving a projection of where the general fund's expected to end, both on the revenues, expenses and with our reserve. And then for the second part of tonight's item is the first budget study session. We'll, we'll be discussing just an overview of the budget development process, the augmentations that are being proposed for the upcoming year, MeJrem, and then ending with the five-year forecast. Next slide, please. This is a similar, similar slide to what we presented with the mid-year budget update back in February. This is a projection of where we think our general fund revenues are going to end based off of current data. So on the very far column on the left, with the numbers on it, the fiscal year 22, 23 budget, those were our projections for the different revenue categories when we adopted the budget, the current budget. Going through March, we've updated those projections based off of how things are trending. There isn't a huge difference from what we presented back with the mid-year update in February. So in the mid-year update, we were thinking that our revenue projections were going to end the year about two and a half percent above what we originally projected at budget adoption. That number is up to three and a half percent. So while that's great news, and we are definitely seeing, I think, what a lot of people call it deceleration of revenue growth. So revenue's still growing, but it's definitely growing at a much slower pace than what we've seen in prior, in previous years. So on the positive side, and what's changed since mid-year, so with sales tax and MeJrem, we're definitely seeing a bump in those categories and we bumped that up for our projection for the end of the year, as well as in the other revenues category. So with other revenues, this is where you see our interest earnings on our investment portfolio. We've had some really large payments related to some non-residential projects, so development rated, development related revenues that have come to the general fund. And then finally, in this category, we also receive money from the state for an intergovernmental transfer payment related to our fire department's paramedic transports. And so with those numbers coming in higher than projected, we bumped that up, as you can see, that's 17% variance there. On the other, on the flip side, things that we've had to, revenues that we've had to revise down in the other taxes category, you see that we're projecting revenues in that category to finish about 2% lower than what we were projecting at the beginning of the year. That has to do with our hotel tax or transient occupancy tax. Those revenues are coming in lower than we were anticipating, and for that reason, we're lowering our projection. And then the department and charges and fees category, you see that that number's also being revised down about 3%. And that's primarily due, due to the revenues for ambulance billing coming in lower than what we were thinking at the beginning of the year. Next slide, oh, sorry. And so I'm now, I'm now going to pass it to our budget analyst, John Colette, to go over the trends through the third quarter.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This part of our presentation will focus on revenue trends through the third quarter of the current fiscal year. The trends are based on actual revenues-
Just pull that microphone a little closer. Could you please? Thanks, all right.
How's that? The trends are based on actual revenues for the first nine months of the current fiscal year, along with updated sales tax estimates from our consultant, HDL. The first category we'll start with is property tax. Property taxes account for approximately 20, 27% of the city's general fund revenue, making it the city's largest source of revenue. Through third quarter, the city has received approximately 19.7 million in property tax revenue. This is a 1% increase from fiscal year 21, 22. Regular property taxes continue to trend positively year over year with an average annual growth rate of 5% since fiscal year 18, 19. And while we're only slightly above last fiscal year through the third quarter, we are projecting fiscal year 23 to be about 3% higher than fiscal year 22. Property tax category mainly consists of property taxes, VLF or vehicle licensing fees, and residual balance and pass-through payments. Next category is sales tax. The sales tax is the second largest revenue source for the city, accounting for approximately 21% of the city's general fund revenue. And MeJrem consists of 17% of the city's revenue for a combined total of 38, 38%. Through third quarter, combined sales tax was 39.5 million, represented by the green Represented by the green line on the graph, compared to 38.1 million in fiscal year 22. So about an increase of 1.4 million or 3.7%. Just below the green line, we've separated sales tax and MeJrem, so we can take a look at them separately. Sales tax is represented by this blue column and MeJrem is represented by the yellow column. Sales tax came in at 22.1 million compared to 21.1 million last fiscal year. This is an increase of 4.7%. MeJrem, the yellow column, came in at 17.4 million versus 17 million last fiscal year, and this is a 2.6% increase. Some of the key categories that are doing well are business and industry, a projected increase of 6.9%, autos, transportation, 3.8%, and building and construction at 3.5%. These are just a few of the categories being highlighted tonight, but just as a side note, most industries or categories in, in sales tax are flat to positive for fiscal year 23. We expect that trend to continue through the fourth quarter or through the end of the fiscal year. The last category we'll look at is department charges and fees. The department charges and fees revenue category accounts for approximately 9% of the city's general fund revenues. Through March, revenues were at 8.7 million compared to 8.4 million last fiscal year, or about 3.6% increase. Since fiscal year 18, 19, we've seen an average annual growth rate in this category of about While the category contains the charges and fees for all departments, parks and recreation and paramedic fees are the bulk of the revenues for this category. We'll talk about parks and rec and ambulance charges. Through third quarter, parks and rec continues to see positive impacts on their revenues as their activities and programs were directly impacted by the limitations from state and local mandates in fiscal year 2021. Through third quarter, they saw their revenues increase 38% compared to last fiscal year. There are a few, there are a few that continue, I'm sorry, actual revenues for a third quarter were 3 million versus 2.2 million last fiscal year, so about an 800,000 increase. We continue to see increased activity or participation in many of their programs through third quarter. There are a few that continue to stand out, including aquatics, gymnastics, youth services and youth sports. For ambulance revenue or ambulance charges, it's down about 11% compared to last fiscal year. We talked about it at the, in the mid-year budget update, as well as in the first quarter budget update. But just to reiterate, during the first quarter, we saw increased contractual write-downs in our ambulance billings. It was an anomaly and that has since corrected, and we've seen normal activity with billings since first quarter. We expect by the end of the fiscal year to be closer to flat or a slight decrease in revenue compared to fiscal year 22. Over the past five years, ambulance transport fees has seen an average growth rate of 12% year over year, so it's fairly significant. This revenue is directly related to call volume or number of transports by the fire department annually. So we expect revenues to remain relatively consistent in this category. Overall, revenue for department charges and fees are continuing to see modest growth and we expect to see that trend to continue through the end of the fiscal year. That concludes third quarter revenue trends, and from here, I will pass it over to our budget manager, Leslie Hoover, who will go over proposed budget augmentations.
Thank you. As Ken mentioned, we do have one augmentation request for you tonight, and it is from MeJrem for $50,000 for, this is year two of the participant scholarships. There was an initial budget of $100,000 and their waitlist is currently at approximately 60 to 70 families with the full $100,000 being allocated. By doing this augmentation request now, this will allow the opportunity for those on the waitlist, the ability to secure programming now versus having to wait within the new fiscal year in July. Now I will pass it back to Ken to go over the Q3 revenue and expenditure projections.
Thanks, Leslie. So the following table, this is our projection based off of the revenue trends that John talked about. And then this also includes the budget augmentation that Leslie brought up as well. So based off of current data, this is where we think the general fund's going to end fiscal year 23, so the current fiscal year. And so the different shades of orange, if you were to separate out the general fund into MeJrem versus non-MeJrem, this is what this table kind of shows what that would look like. And so kind of the table on the right, looking from top down, we're reading it from top down, revenues and transfers then for the, the general fund, this is the non-MeJrem portion. We were expecting to bring in 114.4 million, spend about 122.2 million. And so you see that expenses exceed revenues for the non-MeJrem portion of the general fund by about 7.8 million. When you include MeJrem, we are factoring that coming in at about 23 million, expenses being about 14.1, so a surplus of 8.9 million. So I think this slide really highlights the importance of MeJrem really to stabilize the general fund, protect Vacaville's quality of life, and really build on our reserves so that when times are bad, we have the reserves to kind of weather that storm. And so on the revenue side, as mentioned earlier, we're expecting our revenues to come in about, you know, a little over four, a little under 4% over initial estimates. On the expense side, when you're comparing to previous years, we are noticing expenses are trending up, especially on the services and supply side, where in the past, we were typically able to bank on there being some budget savings there. I think with inflation, with the delays in supply, with supply chain issues, we are seeing those expenses start to creep up to where we don't think there's going to be as much budget savings compared to what we've been seeing in prior years. And so what does that mean for the general fund in total? So for the general fund overall, we are anticipating it finishing with a surplus of a little over $1 million. So that's what that $1.1 million represents. And for the reserve to finish a little under 55 million or a 43% reserve. Slide, please. So there is one recommendation for fiscal year 23, and then we'll revisit this again at the end of the presentation, but it is for that $50,000 related to the youth scholarship program. And so I'll now pass it on to the city manager to open up the budget study session number one for next year's budget.
Thank you, Ken. So now, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we move into the first part of our study session for the fiscal year 24 budget. Next slide, please. So as we do each year, we break up our budget presentation into a variety of components. The first one we're presenting to you tonight is the update on augmentation request for the city council, as well as the forecast. We'll do that tonight. At your next meeting in June, we'll go ahead and have presentations from the different departments, highlight some of the features that each year departments are doing and working on and services that they provide that are new as part of this budget. And then finally, at your second meeting in June, we'll come back to the council with the formal document for final adoption and approval. Next slide, please. So the piece that I want to share with the council as we go into this conversation about highlighting the budget is it kind of a reminder of what we presented to you just barely 10 days ago at your retreat. We presented the council this, these foundational billing blocks, if you will. We kind of presented this at the retreat as, as a way of where everybody hopefully can understand it as like a personal budget. There's foundational things that you have to take care of in your personal budget, such as your, your, your living accommodations, your food supply, et cetera. There's the structural stuff that you need to take care of, things that come up that, you know, surprises that you weren't planning on or whatever, that you do have to plan for to, to keep things running. And then finally, the quality of life category, where hopefully that's where you get to invest in, you know, bettering your life, your quality of life. And so we did the same thing here that we've been doing for the past three budgets that we presented to council. And so here's some examples of those particular categories in these very important topics. And I won't go through them all right now because you can clearly see what they are, but just to give you an idea, what we've been trying to do as part of this budget, especially again in this year, because based on the trends that our budget team has shared with you just a moment ago, and what Ken and his team will share with you going forward about the budget forecast and the assumptions- about the budget forecast and the assumptions, the uncertainty about the economy right now, I asked our team to play it tight to the vest going forward. And so council has been very gracious in the past couple of budgets with us, giving us some additional resources to go out there and do more things, to put back into the community, to strengthen our organization, and add new services and programs for the community. And so what we are working towards this year as part of this initial budget proposal is to, again, invest in each and one of these categories, because you're running many different companies here at City Hall. And so we want to make sure that we're investing in all of these so that there are no surprises, so that we are able to provide those minimum levels of service, if not the maximum level of services wherever we can. And so our process for this year's budget was to, well, actually, I'll just jump right into it. I asked all the department heads to give me their top three priorities. And so that was either staffing, or services, or programs, or supplies, or whatever. And so to their credit, they responded very well, and I believe that what you'll see tonight, and as part of the first part of the budget, is a very strategic, well-thought-out budget for your consideration, that invests in each three of these categories, if you will. And so I will point out that as we walk through the presentation, you'll see the initial requests for augmentations, but we also have a list of augmentations that we are not recommending go forward at this time. It's not to say that they're not important, but given the financial climate right now, we're really putting forward what we believe are have-tos to provide these services. And so the hope is that as we, you know, move through the year and see what the economy's doing, then we can come back and revisit that at mid-year as we give you those quarterly budget updates, see how we're progressing, how we're doing, and then there might be an opportunity for some of those other augmentation requests that we're proposing not to fund at this time, to possibly come back and have those, a future dialogue with council at that time. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to our team to walk you through the specifics of the requests before you tonight.
Thank you, Erin. So first, to kind of just go over the budget development process. Each year, the responsibility for preparing the budget is the city manager and the budget division within finance. What might seem like the budget process is short as we're coming to you in May, we actually do start this process in November each year, so it takes about a half a year to compile a full budget. The budget division begins working on establishing what we call a base budget in November. It involves taking the final budget from the previous year, reducing it for any one-time expenditures, and adjusting for any contractual obligations per established active labor agreements or other long-term contracts. Examples of base budget adjustments are here in front of you tonight on this slide. Adjusting the position budget with new rates for PERS, PARs, OPEB, and healthcare premiums. Applying current MOU agreements that will affect the upcoming year. Adjusting the department's supplies and services by CPI. We use the Consumer Price Index for San Francisco, Oakland, and Hayward as of December each year when building the base budget. As of this past December, 4.9 was the CPI, which is what is currently loaded in our base budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Also, the budget division analyzes and adjusts specific indirect line items that affect multiple departments, such as fuel, gas, electricity, as well as any programs funded by charges back to users during operations through internal service funds, such as garage charges or citywide technology. Once the base budget model is built by the budget division, usually sometime around the end of February, the departments typically have a month to review their base budgets and prepare any augmentation requests to fund service levels and propose goals consistent with council's strategic plan. These requests are also discussed in detail during department meetings with the budget team. Next slide. And thus, this is where we are right now with the augmentations for your consideration tonight. Attached to the staff report is a list of requested augmentations for the fiscal year. The slide summarizes all the recommendations for personnel requests by the departments. As you can see on the slide, there's a total of seven proposed position changes recommended for council's consideration, however, the net impact would be only an additional five full-time employees. The first one we have is for our community development department. We're recommending one position for them as a plan check engineer. This position would provide quality plan checks for all development in the city, as reported in the status of the general plan annual progress report to the city council. Residential construction in Vacaville is productive and stable, and now with economic development bringing in biotech industries, a plan check engineer will provide the experience and expertise needed to ensure the safety of future development for all new residential projects, as well as non-residential facilities. The next item we have here is a conversion of a part-time office assistant to a full-time office assistant for our housing department. Currently, they do have a part-time office assistant paid through approximately 39,000 of existing housing funds, which they would convert to a full-time office assistant, but they would also need an additional $52,000 in general funds to do this. This conversion is necessary to support the additional administrative tasks of the department with new programs, grants, and provide additional flexibility for front counterstaff, and also encourage employee retention as this is a high turnover position. While this would add an additional full-time position to the department, they currently have an existing vacant limited-term housing technician that is going to be expiring this June, which would reduce the department's count by one. Thus, by adding this one, the net overall change would be zero. The next item we have for you tonight is an analyst for our human resource department. With the increase in recruitments due to turnover, retirements, and the addition of new positions, HR staff needs more assistance at the analyst level. Just in this last year, we have hired over 80 full-time positions, 150 part-time positions, and screened over 6,000 applications. Furthermore, we are anticipating this to continue to grow each year as a changing workforce is now more fluid. More people are moving around, especially in the public sector, as a result of pension reform. The next item is for our finance department. We are recommending the addition of an assistant director position. This position would oversee daily operations of the divisions within the department in collaboration with a director of finance. This would allow the director of finance to be more active in upcoming citywide financing matters, such as enhanced infrastructure financing districts, community facility districts, energy-efficient initiatives, as well as address some critical strategic plan priorities like relaunching the budget transparency website and succession planning. The last three positions for your consideration tonight are for our public works department, which would result in additional two full-time employees. The first one is an office engineer. The department is currently utilizing inspection staff to complete all construction administration and field inspection tasks with the assistance of a contract compliance specialist. This creates a situation where inspection staff is not able to spend the time necessary to adequately perform their core inspection duties. This position would focus on construction administration and management tasks, allowing inspectors more time to be focused on the field inspections and reporting. The next position we have is a street supervisor for concrete. This would help over our concrete and flood mitigation due to increased liability and staffing needs. The final position is an engineering technician. This would be in traffic engineering. The population of Vacaville has grown almost 20% since 2000. The increase in population has resulted in increased traffic signals and lane miles, along with overall number of traffic requests. Thus, the growth in the workload has resulted in engineering tasks not being completed or being completed in a less frequent manner. The addition of the second engineering technician would give traffic engineers more time to work on engineering tasks. Furthermore, we would be adding this position within the new budget year. We would also be freezing the GIS tech position approved by council in the current fiscal year. While this position is still needed, it is currently vacant, and changing priorities have escalated the need for an engineering technician. Eventually, the department will be seeking to unfreeze the GIS tech position, and that will be brought back to council at a further date. So this next slide, we're going to go over the augmentations for services and supplies. There are several items on here tonight, and I will go through the list. First, we have for city council, additional training, $3,500. For community development, we do have a land management software that needs to be implemented. The city's existing land management system provides online one-stop-shop user experience for planning permitting inspections and parcel address management. The new and improved system, to be known as Central Square Community Development, is an upgrade from the current Trackett software. The land use management system is a critical business function for the city overall and is utilized by multiple departments. The total budget augmentation request tonight is $428,900, which consists of 386,101 time implementation expenses and the annual ongoing support for maintenance costs of about $42,000. Furthermore, the general fund would be responsible for 233,800 of one-time costs, and community development would be responsible for the remaining approximately 200,000, as well as the ongoing maintenance costs. The next item on here is related to our fire department. Each city is responsible for contributing additional $15,000 annually to go towards a lease-to-own agreement for a replacement hazmat vehicle. This increase is in excess of the 10,000 we currently pay to the hazmat team. Moving forward, the total contribution would be 25,000. In addition, with fire, we have, as discussed at the recent strategic planning session, the last standards of coverage study was done in 2018, and it recommended moving the truck company from Station 74 to 72, and a fifth engine being placed at Station 74. Growth in the community and the increasing calls for service necessitated update of standards of coverage study to determine the timing of the moving of the truck from 72 and the additional staffing required for an engine company at Station 74. Next is for our human resources department, and this is to focus on citywide training program. With the ever-growing and evolving workforce, HR needs to invest more in a robust citywide training. Some of the items we would like to implement include performance appraisal utilizing continuous feedback coaching models, leadership development program, career development program and workshops, and organizational development consultant to perform employee satisfaction surveys. Also with HR, we have 42, about 45,000 for public safety wellness. This program started by, was housed in both PD and fires since inception. Discussions regarding the cost and oversight of the program have led to the decision to move it to HR for both. The current estimated cost is slightly over $93,000 a year, which would result in the additional $45,000 needed to continue this program. The next item is for non-departmental. The additional funding needed here for various citywide memberships and/or contributions to local agencies. This includes items like 25,000 for Solana Local Agency Formation Commission, 15,000 to upgrade our membership with Travis to be on the executive leadership committee, $20,000 to increase the annual contribution to the DVBID from the current 55,000 to 75,000, and then adding Dixon-Grebel Alliance contribution as well. For Parks and Recreation Department, we do have one request for a park ranger truck. The department is in need of an additional ranger truck to support park ranger operations. Currently, our two park rangers share one truck, which puts constraints on scheduling availability of park patrol. This would be funded out of our Lagoon Valley Gate Proceeds Fund. The next item for our police department, the total here is 311,700. One-time funds is just over 194,000. This is into several kind of categories. We have safety equipment totaling over almost 160,000, and this would be a one-time expense to outfit all of our patrol vehicles with modern ballistic helmets that would allow the use of modern external communication equipment. Furthermore, to stay up to date with current active shooter responses, the department is requesting 120 rifle plates to be added to each patrol vehicle. For hiring and recruitment incentives, there's a one-time cost of 27,000 for hiring incentives and marketing as they continue to secure staffing levels. Ongoing costs of 17,600 for cadet-related items such as uniforms, training, and activities. Regarding community police outreach, there's a total of 32,500. A one-time cost of 7,500 related to cops-in-the-class pilot program they have been working on. This would expand the department's current efforts in establishing relationships and breaking barriers with elementary schools. And then the last category for them, I'm sorry, some other ongoing costs regarding their program improvements for PD's annual community engagement efforts, including community academy and national night out. Under software, maintenance, and contract supplies and equipment, there's a total of 74,000 for that. That includes items related to their Lexus Nexus subscriptions, Solano County mobile live-scan machines, 16,000 of a firearms and ammo budget increase, and then $13,000 to secure communication can or small equipment replacement. For our public works department, we have a total of 625,700, with the majority being related to one-time costs. For Measure M, there's one item here, and it's related to Play For All Park. This is the lighting that has, with the recent opening of the community park, this park was a volunteer constructed-driven park, was constructed with no electrical services at the site due to substantial cost of over $600,000, and as a result, there is no lighting. Representatives from our police department recommended installing lighting to enhance safety of the park users. Our public works staff have found a gap solution at this time to install solar LED lighting until a permanent electrical service is funded. This would include six lights within the park and four lights in the parking area. The next item for public works to propose of the general fund includes one-time costs totaling 527,500, and ongoing costs of 13,200. These one-time costs include $70,000 for traffic signal communication repair on Montevista and Brown Street. Currently, there is a break in the system that is preventing communication between the traffic management center and five of our traffic signals along Montevista. The proposed repair work would entail replacing traffic signal pull boxes and rewiring damaged wires in the vicinity of East Montevista and Brown Street. There is also 47,000 for fencing of city-owned open space for cattle grazing. This would cover approximately 110 acres and 3,500 lineal feet of fencing to separate city-owned property adjacent to private-owned properties. There is $170,000 for one-time costs for the replacement of fire alarm systems in VPAT or the Vacaville Performing Arts Theater and the police department. Both of these systems have exceeded their 20-year useful life expectancy, resulting in multiple ongoing issues, including not operating correctly, replacement parts that have become near impossible for staff to source, which further impacts staff's ability to maintain these critical systems. For public works, we also have one-time costs of $80,000 for storm drain inlet ditch construction. During the January 2000 flooding event, public works maintenance responded to flooding. Upon inspection, staff found that the area was draining poorly and discovered a sinkhole developing in the area of city-owned property. The storm drain line adjacent to the flooding property was connected to the detention basin and the concrete V ditch that trains under the portion of open space. Thus, one-time funds are needed to complete the repair of this drainage facility. There's $160,000 for the removal of both invasive and non-native vegetation along Ullatus Creek. Ullatus Creek in Andrews Park is the home of the downtown Creek Walk and Plaza. Over the years, non-native tree, plant, and species have increased, along with creek bank disturbing the natural aesthetic of the creek. The creek bank is a California Department and Fish and Wildlife regulated The Creek Bank is a California Department and Fish and Wildlife regulated area, and it requires permits through DFW as well as a biologist surveying the project for oversight. Removal of the non-native vegetation will restore the Creek Walk experience as well as satisfy the associated downtown specific plan project requirement. Finally, there is a minimal request for additional ongoing maintenance costs of 13,200. This is related to the annual landscape for the Mariposa Center. While working with the Housing Department, this fiscal year, the Public Works Maintenance assumed the responsibility of the landscape maintenance for the Mariposa Center due to the reprogramming of this site. Next slide. So this slide contains all of our unfunded requests at this time that the city manager mentioned earlier. I'm not going to go through all of them, but there are seven additional positions as well as one-time and ongoing services and supply requests. As he also mentioned, we are not recommending funding at this point with the adoption of the budget. However, it is likely that we will come back to council as we look at economic conditions in the new fiscal year. Next slide. So this slide contains a summary of all augmentations that I went over that we are asking you to consider for adoption into the New Year's budget. For the general fund, there's three positions. One-time cost, just over $1 million. Ongoing costs at 946,800 for a total of 1.9 from the general fund. For Measure M, there was the one item of 85,000 related to the Play For All Park. For other funds, this would consist of community development in our engineering services department. There are two positions with one-time costs at 192,200 and ongoing costs of 379,200. So we have a total of five FTEs overall, about 1.2 or 1.3 million in one-time costs, another 1.3 in ongoing costs. Next, I'll turn it back to Ken to go over Measure M.
Thanks, Leslie. So for the next couple of slides, we'll be going over Measure M specifically and what's being recommended to be funded in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. So for the upcoming fiscal year 2324, the recommendations for Measure M specifically would be to continue the pilot and district benefit programs that were really highlighted at the last council meeting with the Measure M update. So some examples would be the DEI Initiative Youth Scholarship Program, Neighborhood Cleanup. Related to capital additions, we are proposing modest additions in the upcoming fiscal year, and this will be discussed in more detail in the second budget study session when the Public Works Department discusses the capital improvement program budget specifically. But just to highlight a couple of things here, the proposed recommendation is, the amount is 1.23 million. And then some of the items that are included for funding are the downtown specific plan, Davis Street Gymnasium. And then a lot of the park improvements that have been funded over the last couple of years were now getting to the stage where these are going to be moving into construction. So there is funding included to finish, to move into that phase, the construction phase of some of the parks that are called down on the slider, the Pheasant Country Park, Trower, Lagoon Valley Dog Park, and Archery Range. Additionally, for Measure M, continuing the apprentice pilot program. And then for the youth scholarship program, this is something that was mentioned with the Measure M update. One of the things you're going to see in this proposed budget for the upcoming year is that currently the youth scholarship program is funded at $100,000. Because the last two years, we've had to come back to council and ask for an increase to this. What we're proposing is that this amount gets bumped to $150,000 in the upcoming year. The adaptive sensory funding, this was another item that was brought up specifically in the Measure M update. So currently, there's $50,000 that's funded annually for adaptive sensory equipment at the different parks. What we're proposing to really make this process more efficient when it comes to funding and also streamline the processes, instead of having this kind of separate funding for adaptive sensory equipment, that as these park improvement projects are coming up to really just a budget appropriately and factor those into the park improvements themselves as opposed to having kind of a different set aside for adaptive sensory equipment. Additionally, the Measure M recommendations would be to continue to fund a lot of things that were started with the fiscal year 2223 budget. So the things that the city manager talked about related to the foundational structural challenges with staffing, maintenance, addressing our unfunded liabilities, and being more proactive with paying more to save on interest costs there. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of represents what I talked about in the previous slide by the numbers. And so with Measure M, that fund is, we project that to enter the upcoming fiscal year with the commitments of about $31.3 million. Projection is that for revenues, it's coming in at a little under 23 million. Expenses between staffing, ongoing programs, such as our park beautification, street maintenance, those types of programs, apprentice program, that being about 13.4 million. CIP projects of 1.2 million. Leslie had mentioned that there is the request for 85,000 for the line for Play For All, so that is what that .1 million represents. And so for Measure M specifically, we're looking at projected surplus of 8.1 million. Because we know that the general fund is going to have a reserve above policy levels overall, we are proposing that we continue to make these pension ADP payments to Calpers towards the unfunded liability to save on long-term interest costs. And so that would leave the Measure M fund with a fund balance, projected fund balance of 37.2 million at the end of next year. Next slide, please. So the next several slides are going to be about, are going to be related to the five-year forecast for the total general fund. Next slide. So this slide is the assumptions that we used to build the five-year forecast for the general fund. As mentioned in previous budget updates, for revenues, our two biggest revenue sources are sales tax and property tax. We work with an outside consultant, HDL, on making those projections and it's been talked about throughout this presentation. What we're seeing with the economy is a slowing down, and that is reflected in the revenues that you're going to see in the next slide. And that's on the sales tax side, so one of our biggest funding sources. The projection is that sales tax growth is going to be flat for fiscal year 24. In fact, it's actually projected to be a little under 2% what we currently are getting for the current fiscal year due to the economic uncertainty. And then once you get to the outside fiscal year, so basically fiscal year 25 and beyond, then we get back to kind of 3% growth. But really, for next year, you are looking at a flat sales tax projection. On the property tax category section, we're projecting an increase in that category by about 4% next year. As you know, during the pandemic, with property values, they definitely went up, skyrocketed during that period of time, and we benefited from that on the property tax side because revenues are driven by those assessed values. We anticipate for the next year, we are still going to see an increase. But we've gone through, I believe it's nine months now, where property values, the average sales price in Vacaville has dropped. And so that is eventually going to catch up to us to where you are going to see that reflected in our revenues. And so in our forecast, we are building that in to where next year, because of the timing with when the county assesses property values and when we get the payment in the upcoming year, we do expect property taxes grow by 4%. But then when you start going to the outside years, we are kind of impacted by real estate values dropping currently. We're also on the TOT, Hotel Tax. We have lowered projections just based off of how things are trending, and so that is also built into the upcoming forecasts. And then just overall for revenues, as the note says on the last bullet point on the left under the revenues, for revenue growth, we're expecting that to be below 2% in the upcoming year. And then once we get into fiscal year 25 and beyond, then kind of getting back to that, seeing growth above 3%. On the expenditure side, the forecast builds in the different recommendations that are being made this evening. So that is built into the expense. For personnel, because of sort of the staffing and vacancy numbers that we're seeing in the current fiscal year, with those numbers being around 10% for the upcoming year, we have kind of lowered that down, but we do expect vacancies to be about 7.5%. So that is the assumption that we're using for personnel. As Leslie mentioned, for services and supplies, with CPI, we build in that increase into our services and supplies budget. So that's 4.9%, that's the increase for the upcoming year. And then for pension, we are taking kind of a proactive approach to forecasting this. As mentioned during like the unfunded liabilities presentations that we do, Calpers is behind on when they give those numbers to us. And so we know what we're supposed to pay for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 24, and that's based off of how the Calpers fund did in 2021. This summer, we're going to get the numbers on how Calpers did for fiscal year 2022, which is going to tell us what we need to pay in '25. What we're doing with the forecast is that we know how '22 finished. We have, based off how things are trending so far this fiscal year, we know that Calpers is in all likelihood not going to hit the 6.8% that they're supposed to get annually. And so rather than assume that they are going to hit a 6.8% return, we are taking the approach of lowering that assumption and building in what would happen if they only got a 3.3% return. And that number comes from when Calpers did a presentation to their board as of like the results as of March, they were 3.3%. Now, I think we're all hoping that they hit that 6.8%, but just with financial planning, we want to be on a conservative side. And so we are building in a more conservative, if they were to really get that 3.3%, what does that look like? What does it do to our forecast? So that's built into the forecast that we're going to show. And then finally, on the expenditure side, with the additional discretionary payments and the one-time CIP funding, you won't see this in the expense numbers that we'll be going over in the next slide. What we're proposing is paying these out of reserves, going back to the strategic planning session that we had a couple of weeks ago, kind of tying it back to the home budget. The expenses, really what we're showing there are kind of the ongoing expenses. With CIP, and with the CIP funding and the ADP, which are voluntary payments, can you see these as more of like the one-time? Or if there is funding available, if you have money above your reserve policy, these are kind of the things that you would kind of fund either higher or kind of include in your forecast. So we're proposing funding out of the reserve, and it's not shown as an expense. And the next slide, next slide, John. So this chart is our projected revenues and expenses through fiscal year 2028. And so the way to read the chart would be the columns represent expenses or projected expenses, and then the lines represent our revenue projections. And so starting with the columns, the blue portion of the column is the general fund expenses, not including Measure M. And then the gray line represents general fund revenues without Measure M. So you definitely see that gap that which we talked about early in the presentation. That is something that we anticipate is going to continue through 2028. With the orange column that you see, that's the Measure M expense portion. And so if you were to view each column, that's the total general fund expenses overall. What we want to have and what we want to see is that the gold line at the top, which is total general fund revenues, exceed your expenses. And so if they exceed your expenses, that's how you're maintaining a balanced total general fund budget. And so for fiscal year 23, as mentioned, we anticipate that there being a total general fund surplus of 1.1 million. Fiscal year 24, that amount being 1.4 million. And then kind of going over the years, at '28, that being 3.1 million. So like on average, we're looking at for the general fund overall, averaging about a $1.3 million surplus when you're looking at the general fund in total. Next slide, please. This slide is very similar to the one shown before, with the exception being those dash green and red lines. And so this represents sort of what does it look like if revenues were to come in 5% below our expectations? What does it look like if it were to finish 5% above? So just kind of taking fiscal year 24 as an example, we are projecting our general fund revenues overall to come in at 139.4 million. Under a scenario, kind of you can call it a recession scenario, but under that red scenario, if general fund revenues were to finish 5% below what we're projecting, that would come in at 132.4 million. So like, what does that do for how the year finishes? So right now, we're projecting '24 to finish with a $1.4 million surplus. If this recession scenario played out as an example, we'd be looking at that being in a $5 million deficit. And then on the positive side, if our reserves end up, or sorry, our revenues for the general fund end up finishing greater than we're projecting, so 5% above our projections, that would come in at 146 million for 2024. So we would actually finish with a surplus of not 1.4 million, but 8 million. So really, the purpose of the slide is really just more so to give you a range. This is something that we're definitely going to monitor, and as we do the budget, the quarterly budget updates, we'll definitely be keeping council and the public apprised of these developments. Next slide, please. So this slide is our projected reserves over the five years. So the last slide talked about revenues and expenses. This is where we think the reserves are going to finish over the next five years. So for fiscal year 24, we anticipate the reserve being at 56 million or a 43% reserve when you're just looking at those kind of ongoing revenues and expenses. And then in '28, being 61 million, and then a reserve percentage of 41%. The lines in the middle are in red are the things that we're proposing that get paid out of reserves in the years where there isn't a surplus. And so just for presentation purposes, when you're looking at that CIP, this is our funding for capital improvement projects. You notice that's a flat 2.5 million from '25 to '28. In reality, it's all in all likelihood not going to play out that way. You're going to have some years where more funding is needed, some years where maybe less funding than that's needed. But for presentation purposes, we kept that flat. For the ADP payment, these are voluntary payments that we're making to Calpers to save on interest costs. And so that's projected at 2.2 million that we have that built into 2028. So what does that do to the reserve? So you can see for 2024, under this projection, reserves would finish at 51 million or 39% reserve at '24. And then fiscal year '28, you would have a reserve of 38 million or 25%. And so just as a reminder, the general fund policy is having a reserve of 16% to 25% or two to three-month reserve. So this is really kind of a plan on how much funding you would be able to make out of the reserves and still have a reserve above policy levels by even going out through 2028. Next slide, please. So tonight, we do have one formal recommendation that requires council approval, and that's the item that was discussed for fiscal year '23, the budget augmentation for 50,000 for the youth scholarship program. And the second bullet point here is really we're looking for direction from council on the fiscal year '24 budget augmentations and what's being proposed so that in preparation for budget study session number two on June 13, we can start building that in and bring any questions you have back for discussion. Please. That concludes the presentation. We'd be happy to take questions.
Probably kept you up at night, hasn't it? Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot to absorb in here, and so I'm sure there's going to be some questions along the way. Appreciate all the work that you've done, all of you and staff, trying to put this together. So really, there's two items tonight. One is just a budget study session with feedback, and then the other is a request for augmentation, if I have that correctly. All right. At this point, I don't see any questions from the council. I do see one. I'll put it for Silo.
Oh, it's like, maybe not a, sorry, it's a request. But a question is about, it's a very small budget item, and it might seem weird to the public. But our commissioners and particularly our advisory, our advisory members, so like on the, that's more the advisory component, those particular bodies, those are volunteer-based, there's no incentive or anything, no form of stipend. Is that correct? So like, we get our, what is it, whatever, a couple hundred, a few hundred bucks a month. Commissioners, do they receive some type of financial contribution for their monthly commitment?
I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Thornbrook if you want to answer that.
So yes, our commissioners do receive a stipend of $40 per meeting.
And then the citizens advisory groups. Might be a bizarre request, but I'm not asking for us as council members because we get paid the big bucks to be up here. And that's being sarcastic for people who don't know my sarcasm. Is there any way we can work in possibly some type of cost just for a small meal or snack for the folks? That's just against the request. You don't have to answer it today. So.
I appreciate what you're saying. There's a lot of people who do and provide a lot of work. And so thank you for thinking of that. Pepper Chapman.
What's, is there a way to give consideration to the Play For All Park in regards to the parking? We've received information from the community about the popularity of the park and of safety concern because of the number of vehicles that are parking out on the roadway. We've even heard of one incident, accident, not incident, accident that did occur out there. And I know that when we had the last event, big event out there, that security, our police department did have the cadets out there, and they did a wonderful job, by the way, to direct traffic. And we were off into the dirt area, and I've been out there since then and to keep from parking on the street. I again went into the dirt area and you end up being blocked by someone who doesn't leave an opening for you to come back out. But anyway, with all that said, can, has there been, was there any discussion? Or can we give consideration to advancing or assisting them with the parking?
Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment on that?
Certainly, thank you. So excellent question. I understand that council has been getting quite a few inquiries from a variety of different folks out there in their community. At this time, our public works team and our Parks and Rec team is working actively with the design team of the Play For All Park group. And so they haven't really made an official request of us yet because we're working through the final details of just exactly what that looks like. So they do have plans that they prepared because just as a reminder for everyone's benefit, the Play For All Park was designed and funded through a private nonprofit organization. And so we're very grateful for that and the efforts that they put in. And now that they're moving into phase two, they're looking forward to using grant funding that they've gotten to to build some of those other features. But unfortunately, they're sharing with us that those grant funds cannot be used for additional parking. So this is a case of, you know, the success of the park has has outperformed the initial improvements that they had designed and planned for that park. So our team is working with their team. We're hoping to come back with some final design details between the two groups. Once that's completed, we'll go ahead and figure out just exactly what their request is. And we'll come back to the council with a recommendation on how we can help implement that. Things, other things that we're working with them on is who's actually going to construct it because they can probably do it quicker than we can, just because we have to go through the bidding process. And so that will take time. So we're trying to maximize the most efficient way in doing this. And so once we complete those conversations, we'll be back in front of council with that update.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of us have received inquiries on that. So thank you. Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you for all the information, a lot to take in at one time. I will speak in support of the scholarship augmentation. I think that's good since we have a waiting list. And I am sure that Parks and Rec will be able to use that for people who haven't yet received a scholarship so that if someone's already received one, they would be behind someone that hasn't got one yet this year, I'm hoping. And so I'm glad we're being able to do that. And a second question, I like the conversions that we have from part-time to full-time. And one of them, you talked about, it's not really, it's kind of a zero sum game because there's a frozen position. So when you use that 7.5 vacancy in HR, how many frozen positions are there in HR? Or is that actively 7.5% that we are actively trying to fill that doesn't include frozen positions?
As far as the frozen position piece, we don't have any frozen positions right now at this point. And it's been a long time since we've frozen a position. So this would be the first one at this point. And again, that would come back to council at a later time to unfreeze specifically. As far as the vacancy rate, I'll let Ken talk to that piece.
Yeah, so for the vacancy rate, that's going off of, I kind of referenced this 10% number that we're at for the current year. That's looking at the the positions that have been approved by council. So the budgeted positions versus the bodies that are actually in them currently. And so of the seven and a half percent, it really is one of those things where we didn't want to go overboard and say, we're going to have a 10% vacancy rate next year. I think it's kind of more of a conservative, well, we know we're not going to have a 2% or 3%. It would be great if we did, but I think the seven and a half, seven and a half percent was really kind of more of a, it's lower than the 10% and it's not kind of unreasonable to expect that, you know, we would still have a vacancy rate that high next year.
Right, so the last one's not really a question, but it's just a generalization. When you talk about how next year, it's get a slower rate, it's a slower rate. And when you were, if you look at the lines, you know, that the dip for the pandemic, we pop back up really. And we're still going up, but not as much as before, but much higher than we were like five years ago. So there, there has been a big difference in our general fund in the last five years, even though we're not going up at the same rate that we had, you know, this year. And I imagine, though, if you looked at the line for the expenses, it would just be a steeper rate because it does seem like things are costing more when we're trying to get things accomplished. But is that, is that kind of a general, am I correct in my general understanding of that?
Yes, I think that's what you're going to see throughout government is that expenses tend to rise faster than than revenues.
And really, even though it's going slower, we're still better than we were just a few years ago with property, as far as property tax goes.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, you're definitely seeing that. And I just measure M kind of throwing that in there. I think that started in 2019 or 20, and that was kind of at that three quarter of a cent rate as opposed to what it was previously. And so just that alone, we are seeing significantly more revenue now than we did if you were to go back, you know, six, seven years ago.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much. That was a great segue, Jeanette. Exactly what my, my thought. I appreciate you guys' presentation. That was long, a lot of hard work. On one of the augmentations, like you guys had me at hello, it was for the kids. I mean, it could have made it easy for you guys, but like, that's, that's awesome. We were talking earlier about the need to really fund the that little, that gap. So other notes, just want to dig into the data a little bit. Segways brought up what Jeanette was talking about. You know, we had a phenomenon, say, 2020, 2021, but going forward, like, you know, I want to kind of be, at the same time, fiscally conservative. I realize, hey, guys, like, yeah, maybe I don't watch enough fiction in my life. But how's the fiscal stuff? I want to make sure we do the right thing at the same time invest in Vacaville and make sure we don't, we don't pull back and miss opportunity. But, you know, I didn't see the data on transfer tax. So we're going to see, we are experiencing a phenomenon in America to where 90% of every single home in America that has a mortgage is at 5.0 or less. No one has the motivation to move. But we're seeing a huge reduction in Vacaville already on transfer tax. So we're seeing less volume, less transfer tax being collected. And we're also seeing a reduction of about 1% to 2% on sales, on property tax. So with what percentage of our revenue do we rely on the transfer tax portion of the sale plus the increase or decrease of the property tax? So those are two mechanisms I know we have to take care of and watch. Revenues are going to keep, expenses will keep going up, but you guys, you guys handle that. We can't stop that. So I can't, I mean, you guys are doing amazing jobs. So not worry about the expenses. We got to make sure we don't go crazy, but I just want to make sure that, I know before I asked you for the 2%, 5% reduction, make sure like, can we handle this, see a reduction to 2% towards major revenue sources, which is TOT, sales tax, transfer tax. At some point, sales tax is going to start dipping too. Black Knight had some data. We went from a 33% savings rate in 2020, because everybody had free money from the government, to now we're at 3% in the country, like 3%. We are now less than probably nine months from people being just tapped out, like literally tapped out as far as the lines available through the creditors. So we're going to have, we're going to hit a point where they can't spend at the rate they're spending. So I want to account for that. But it's like, guys, please make sure you do that to make sure we can go forward, have a fiscally sound city. What if we do have the reduction of transfer tax and sales tax of 2%? It's one, make sure we have that number available because it's going to happen. And we're going to be put into a recession on purpose. We now, the two and 10-year treasuries have been inverted for almost three months. Technically, that's a recession. Like, we're, we're, don't, don't mention it. When I say recession, we're in a depression. That's the way it works. But we need to count for that, right? But when that happens, we're going to see rates go down and spending go back up again. So it's be, it's going to be this weird situation when all of a sudden they announce it, Fed's fund rate goes back down, rates go back down, you run out of fund. So can we make it? Because we function on 2024 on all the property tax and revenue for 2023. Can we make it to 26 without going too far in deficit where we have the, I don't want to cut any services. Like, we just gave two proclamations to our city departments. I want to make sure we can stay on track and not have to cut services to anybody and be fiscally responsible, but still plan for the future. Like, I also make sure that we, we, we count for that what-if scenario. That's probably inevitable. So I just make sure everyone can still do their job and not worry about, God, am I going to lose my income? How about reduction? I want our public works, public service, public safety, all the groups to go every day with a passion knowing that we're doing the best we can. And we've already accounted for the what-if, so they know, hey, just do your job, we got you. Other thing was, sorry, I lose my voice. When it comes to like the programs, like the one-time fee for cops in the classroom, and like, that's amazing. Like, so we're going to fund that, but what's the next step to make sure that's perpetuating going on? And like, like the one-time programs I saw on the budget, how many of those are, do we have the funds to actually say, this is the cost to do it? We want to itemize that to go on because that, that was amazing. Being a part of that presentation, seeing the screen, what they're doing in the classrooms was absolutely something groundbreaking. Also, in the one slide, I don't know where it was, but regarding the lease budget and public, public works, you know, I was going to join Councilman Stockton in doing cameras. I chose not to, because I just didn't feel like there was a real need in my district. I think it's pretty good as far as the coverage. But then in my discovery, I actually reached out to some officers. My kids play soccer and there's like two officers on the team, they're at other cities, and they're really understaffed. One's in Richmond and he's like, we have seven cops at nighttime. Imagine the feeling. So they've started to do other things to offset that lack of, of officers to serve. So starting to make you think about what opportunities, I reached out to officers in Vacaville. So what else is out there? Could we explore or do a one-time fee to allow like our public service, public, public safety to look at what are things we, the other districts are doing by not hiring more officers, but by expanding their services by using technology, like more camp cameras? Like, some officers using flare guns. And I was like, what's this, like, you actually have a gun, a flare gun, you can actually see through walls with infrared. They don't have to enter a house, they can actually look through the walls. I mean, like, they have to be very smart when they know they're, they're running alone. A lot of other ones use, they use like drones. Like, those are two things that if officers alone, you can basically know that there's nine guys in that room. It's not worth me going inside. He can use a flare gun, look through the walls, see the bodies and step back and wait till the cavalry comes. Or use a drone, like, yeah, there's 30 guys there, they've been partying all day. I'm not going to go in there alone. I'm going to wait. Like, I think it's worth exploring, like what other departments are doing. Instead of hiring 10 officers to offset that risk, maybe we can hire more technology. So losing my voice, that's about all I can talk about, but I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
I'm done, I can't talk.
Yeah, just wanted to comment on the transfer tax and then the sales tax. So for transfer tax for the current year, kind of like how much revenue do we bring in? It's about, it's 500,000 this year. And so we have seen that decline. And I want to say last year, we were closer to a million dollars. So we definitely seen that. But the transfer tax overall at 500,000 isn't as big as like sales tax or property tax. And so although we are impacted by it, it's not a huge piece of our revenue. And then on the sales tax piece, we work with the HGL, we have these quarterly updates with them to monitor sort of what's going on out there and how that's trending. I can tell you even like internally staff, when the state releases their monthly allocation of how much we're going to get for that month, we're on top of it. I mean, that's just one of those things that we're constantly looking at because it is, when you look at sales tax and measure M, it's, it's our biggest revenue sources to the general fund. And so we are definitely keeping up with that. And then, you know, I think that's also the importance of the budget updates. So if anything were to turn, be worse than what we're, we're showing here, we would definitely bring back that to council in a timely manner so that we're not put in a situation where it's like too late to make changes.
It was like that, there's a 2%, like hypothetical, the sales, the transfer tax was plus a 2% possible reduction in the property tax. I, I think we're going to be okay. I think, I think Vacaville is going to be okay, it would be a unique city. And the phenomenon is abundantly, everyone has this amazing rate. They're not leaving, namely because they have amazing rate and also because they have so much equity. I think we can, as long as they keep paying their property taxes, we're going to be okay. And once rates go back down, we'll see an explosion of movement. But that was my question, like, could, if we see a small 2% reduction for one fiscal year that will be felt in 2024 or half 20, or 2025, how, can we stay on track for everything without making one revision back to tighten the belt?
That's a good comment. I mean, I think that's the reason why you do the projections the way you do is so important that we do pay attention to that. But Mr. City Manager, I think what I'd like you to do, if you could, is comment on that from, from, you know, that 50,000 foot level from where are we at in the, in the perspective? I know there's one proposition, but a lot of cities are tightening down a lot worse than we are. So where do we stand from maintaining our effective services without any cuts? Which is what I'm hearing you saying. And then also, what do you anticipate even past this new budget and potential augmentations? Because there's a whole list. Obviously, you're looking at, you know, what does this, you know, what does this storm look like? And then what are the priorities are going to be? And so I don't want to assume anything, but I want to give you the opportunity to share. It's like you always come back with potential priorities. There's other projects in the works that come back, that's normal. But I just, I wanted you to kind of share from your 50,000 foot level.
I appreciate that, Mayor, thank you. So from, from that standpoint, you know, we, we've been gearing up to implement the goals and objectives and the strategic initiatives in your strategic plan. And we've had some challenges with the pandemic and staffing challenges. But, you know, thankfully to the council's credit and, you know, approval, staff augmentations that you've given us, we've been successful in bringing some of our first responder departments back up to, you know, proper levels of service to meet those needs. To Councilmember Richie's point real quick, as, as on that particular subject, I assure you that, you know, all departments, but especially our, our first responder, our public safety departments are always looking at how do they meet those minimum safety levels through a combination of, of actual full-time employee as well as, you know, technology and improvements and so forth. So I assure you that, that that is always something that is being researched and evaluated. If you recall, we came to council probably two meetings ago with a request to pursue a new state grant for the, the Real Time Information Center. And that's something that we'll be going after. And that is definitely, you know, one of those new technology programs that has a combination of technology and staffing resources. And so we're always looking for a way to better ourselves through continuous improvement, through a combination of those things, but also being mindful of just exactly what, you know, our, our resource limitations are. So with that said, you know, one of the things as we, we look at the, the forecasts, definitely conservatively, which I believe is very prudent at this point because we don't have a crystal ball in terms of what the economy is going to do. One of the things I would just add in there is it, it doesn't really assume a bigger influx of realization of our biotech and advanced manufacturing strategies. You've heard Don Burris report out at times. And actually, we hope to come back to the council probably in August sometime with a, a new update on, you know, where we're at with those particular strategies. And you'll see that in terms of the potential for new development. So you'll have one-time permit revenue, but then you also see the realization of the property tax. And then because what we're, the strategy, a key element of that strategy is to bring in living wage jobs that can invest in Vacaville, stay in Vacaville and continue to invest in Vacaville, whether it be homes, services, et cetera. And so that realization of, of, of that strategy will definitely provide an influx of, of capital that you don't really see here. Now, we're, we're being, you know, thoughtful about it because it's going through the process right now. But you'll start to see that if, if things continue to the way that we're being told by those companies, you'll see construction later this year on the first part of that. And so that's just an indicator of this, the ecosystem that's happening and the new development wave. And with that, you'll see new housing development, you'll see new investment in that regard as well. So I think from our standpoint, I would say cautiously, we, we are getting into the reserves, but we, you know, for purposes of those one-time costs, to continue those investments in those important services to not only deal with quality of life improvements. And when I say quality of life, I don't just refer to the, the fun things, you know, the new parks and those amenities. They're also providing just basics, fundamental services that our communities come to expect and deserves of being safe, of having um, of being safe, of having good roadways, et cetera, and and programs and and services for after school care and and that sort of thing. So um, I think long term, we're, we're, we're being cautious, but I think it's there. And I think that especially when you factor in what's on the horizon, uh, we're in a good position. And I would say uh, we're, we're probably in the more envious position of the cities in in the county right now um, because of the council policies on spending. Um, and yes, I do know that this is the, the first time that we're suggesting dipping in the reserves for those important services, but it's one time services. So I think we'll um, as the forecast shows, we're gonna, we're gonna be okay. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I guess a lot of information to look at. Um, try to keep it as much on topic as possible. Um, to get to the staffing piece of it, uh, there's a couple of things I've been bringing up uh, for last, I think this is the third time now. Um, first one being an organic public safety grant writer, which would serve fire, PD and public works. Um, especially if the budget is getting a little more constrained due to possible recessions. Um, because a good grant writer, it's not a very expensive position compared to other ones that are on that list. Uh, but a good one will bring in ten, twenty times amount. It'll fully pay for itself. There's a lot of grants out there. Unless you're familiar with the public safety realm of grants, you don't know what all is out there. I think there's a lot of grants out there possibly missing. Um, I mean, that can help fund fire engines, equipment. Uh, but Councilmember Richie brought up was probably the real time information centers that other cities are doing. Uh, especially if it's combined, like a joint one between fire and PD, uh, you can use grants to help fund both of, a lot of that. And then also public works, there's a stormwater grant from the state from the Water Resource Board. Um, so yeah, there's, if you have somebody that's familiar with all those, they can pull in money from all over the place. And it's not just the applications of the grants, it's all the grant work plans that come with that. Because I know I'm have to fill out three different ones myself right now for the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that'd take a lot of work off of staff itself and allow them to do their job instead of filling out Excel spreadsheets to meet grant compliance. And the other one I've been kind of looking at, it's probably the not as needed as a grant writer, but I still think it's needed just due to the size of the city now is some type of emerging emergency management, whether it's an emergency program coordinator, emergency planner, an actual emergency manager. The syntax of that really depends on what you're looking for. Because some of those positions, even though they do the same thing, are grant funded and other ones are not. Like I'm emergency program coordinator, my position is hundred percent funded by grants. So if you have a good grant writer, they can fund other positions for the city to help cover the uh, those aspects of it. Um, but if I was gonna ask for one, then one of the two, I'd probably go for a grant writer first, uh, because I think that'd bring in, bring in money to the city and uh, help offset some of the costs uh, from the general fund. Uh, it comes into services. Um, there is a, I know we're continuing DEI training for the city. Uh, Nicole does an awesome job. I sat through a couple of different trainings of hers. Uh, one thing I might suggest is as we go further into that, is looking more department specific or more subject matter experts. Because I know her background's in education, but if you want to bring somebody in that's either military or law enforcement background that works in DEI, might be more received and better strategies for implementation in those different departments. Always more specific training, more applicable to those departments. Yeah, other than that, yeah, everything else looked pretty good to me. Uh, those are my couple of recommendations for that. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, so just some quick feedback on that. Um, completely agree with your, your assessment about grants. There's a lot of um, some of it's free money and other of it's match money. Uh, we have been utilizing the services of a grant writer, a contract grant writer for five years now. Um, and admittedly, the, the, the assigned grant writer has changed over the course of the years. And uh, right now I think we have the best one that we've ever had. Um, but this particular service um, uh, for a very nominal fee has um, provided returns on that investment uh, four hundred percent at times. And so we routinely meet with them on a monthly basis. Um, all departments are um, involved with this particular grant writer. They bring to us anywhere from sixteen to thirty different grants. They have connections right at the source. Um, they also lobby the capital. Um, and so I think uh, with the particular individual that we have now who's very aggressive and very knowledgeable and involved, uh, we have been able to um, go after a variety of different grants at all levels and in all departments. Um, small ones, big ones, some that require a fairly sizable match and others that don't. And let's see, the other thing that I was gonna mention about that, oh, the, the, the other real valuable part about that is is that they will uh, also help write the grant, they will help administer the grant and implement the grant and report the grant if we're successful in receiving the awards. So um, I completely agree with you that that service is is very important. And and I think right now, uh, at least my recommendation would be is that the service provider that we have is is meeting our needs um, to to pursue that. I know that uh, our departments are also still looking at. And when they go out to trainings and go out to places, you know, the real time grant was something that they were monitoring and watching. And they then share that with the consultant to say, you know, can you help us put this together and those kinds of things? So it's, it's really a symbiotic relationship there. Um, as far as the other one that you mentioned, um, I just lost it. Emergency, no, well, the other topic that you mentioned.
DEI stuff?
The DEI, thank you. Um, so very good point. And you're right, we have more contract services planned with Nicole's um, and her team. Um, they have been reaching out to many different levels of the organization. Uh, you know, frontline to management. Um, they've also been working with very specific departments. And in that regard, they, she brought in someone who has experience in in uh, first responder um, background. And so that definitely did make that transition because our chief was very um, uh, keen to that and wanted to make sure that we were getting someone that could talk the lingo and everything and and that discussion. So um, we actually look forward to expanding that a bit more. We are planning on coming back to the council with uh, with that subject uh, once again, now that the new council is settled and everything. So uh, we have some real good work planned, uh, programs planned for uh, continued use of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just kind of follow because yeah, I didn't know we swapped out grant writers and we have a little bit better one than we had in the past. Um, we maybe do like a, not a like super in depth, but a comparison of other cities that have organic grant writers versus what we have going on right now, like a contracted services. See if there's any uh, difference between having one that belongs to the city versus contracting.
Or we can try to do some research on that.
Nothing super in depth, just a comparison. Thank you.
And um, just my own experience on that also, I think it's also important that when we weigh the balance of maybe an internal, the the ROI also sometimes needs to include the fact that when we, when we pull on a full time employee, we might get a benefit from it. But then we also have a, a cost in perpetuity of staff that sometimes if we, if we absorb into government what can be contracted and consulted out, um, it it affects the, the long term implications of a budget. I, so I would just say if we do that, we look at the implications of the fact that we're bringing on a full time employee that then becomes personable. And then there's a, there's ongoing costs as well.
But I'd also say that there's also the bandwidth. I mean, I think it's great that you have a designated individual that can go after things. We do have one designated representative from our consulting firm to to help us with that. But if we're going after multiple deadlines, which just so happens to occur once in a while, they have a, they have backup that can go ahead and help it, you know, make sure that we meet all those different deadlines and and not uh, overwhelm just one individual. We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, kind of. On that, yeah, there is a return investment. I think any grant writer is gonna pay for itself multiple times over. But kind of like what we find ourselves with the, with the PD and fire is having somebody that belongs to the organization itself is an investment of them belonging to the community itself, I think carries some weight as well. Uh, can you see a big difference in service from grand, new grant writers? Sounds like they're pretty good. But yeah, if you have somebody that belongs to the organization, they have buy in to the organization and that rapport with the staff, with the city and know it. So I think it carries a little bit of weight having somebody that belongs to the group itself.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Um, I won't repeat anything that my colleague said, but I, but I do uh, see the advantages of an actual human being grant writer. Would be interested in that as well. Uh, the real time crime center, I think, is a huge innovation that is helping us solve crimes now and can only improve and reduce um, the effects of, I think it'll save us money um, with, with um, being able to solve crimes without having to hire additional people. Um, there was something that was mentioned earlier regarding a ten percent vacancy of staff positions. I know that that fluctuates throughout the year, but I'm curious to know what was the, the total or estimated salary savings related to staff vacancies this year? Is that a figure that you have or is that something you can give me at least?
Uh, citywide, I don't have that on the top of my head. We do have that number. Uh, we can follow back up with that to you.
Okay, do we think that it's potentially close to or more than the two point six million in augmentations that were brought up today?
Yes, yeah.
Um, I, I um, have some questions. I definitely am going to want to know about the land management software that collectively is um, four hundred and almost twenty nine thousand dollars, which is a huge chunk of the money that's being asked for. I know that there are a lot of folks interested in development, but I'm curious to know how amazing that software is to cost almost half a million dollars. Um, I saw that there is a hazmat um, fire truck that was brought on there related to a JPA. Um, I know there's fifteen, it said there was fifteen thousand ongoing costs. I'm just curious to know if other cities are also paying the same amount of money, which I'm assuming is yes. I'd like more information about the public safety wellness that's uh, a hundred and forty five thousand dollars, just to know what that includes. And um, if that went out to, to RFP or or what, what exactly that entails. And I know that's not necessarily, you're not going to be able to answer that today. Just hoping that somebody can give me that. You listed the membership and local contribution to agencies increases. Um, that would, that was a little over seventy thousand dollars. I would just like to know, like a more itemized list on what those memberships are, whether or not they're absolutely essential or, or, you know, kind of what the city's obligation is and what we get from them for, for um, community. Um, there was a, some talk about Play For All Park, the parking lot and these lights. Um, I'm interested in, I, I really like this park. I think it is a fantastic amenity for our community. But I also know that we've contributed a significant amount of money towards this park as well as waiving fees for developers um, that were building this park. I'd really like to have an itemized list of what fees we've waived for them to build what they've built. And um, you know, if we need to make some additions, I know that there are um, individuals that are, that are continuing to build and want to build in that area that may be able to help with some of that. Um, eighty five thousand dollars for ten lights seems like a lot of money. I don't, I, I don't know how amazing the lights are, but that just seems like a lot of money. I'd like to know more about that. Um, there was some discussion about cattle fencing that needed to be replaced. We, I, I believe we leased that property to folks. I'm just curious what fees we collect related to that and whether or not the fees that we're collecting are enough to cover some of these ongoing expenses with the fencing. Uh, and the last thing is the Creek Walk Restoration Supervisor. I would love to know how much we pay somebody to stand there and watch us um, restore our creek and whether or not that is something that can be done with a community wide effort as opposed to paying for a bunch of money. There was something about a, somebody has to supervise the, the native plants or something coming out?
I have, I can respond to a couple of these.
Thank you. I know I hit you with a lot, but I was trying to get to the question, so.
Um, just on that last one before I forget, I believe that was for the um, downtown creek area. It's under the Department and Fish and Wildlife Supervisors. So I believe Public Works can speak on this more, but we have to pay for someone to oversee that, a biologist or something. But Brian can maybe answer that in a little bit more detail.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, it um, is a regulatory body. Um, the, the Creek Walk area and the is a repairing area. And we're required uh, under the maintenance agreement that we have with uh, the department um, to go through a very long list of requirements. One of those is to hire a biologist to have onsite, to provide training and then provide oversight throughout the work period. And there was an expense to that.
Do we do enough work with our creeks that we could hire our own biologist to do this and other tasks at the city? I'm just curious what the cost is. I don't.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's one off.
Excuse me if I may, and from my experiences dealing with this, you still have to go through that federal agency to get compliance. And so there's no really way to circumvent that inspector being present.
Um, thank you.
And and if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, um, these are great questions. And what I would suggest is, is that some of these that get into some of the department specifics, if it's okay with the council, given the hour and the other items on the agenda, we still have part two and three. And really, part two is where we get into the present, Department of Presentations. And we can come back and and give you some of the specifics of those that you're asking for, um, unless it's a quick answer tonight. Um, but that's just a, a, an opportunity for um, to uh, provide more discussion on it at a future meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we're also just getting some feedback and then we can bring it back when we do department presentations and, and you can take from there. Councilmember Stockton, do you have anything else?
Oh, those are just my questions. They don't have to get me the answers now. I would just like more information on the stuff that I asked. So thank you. Amazing presentation, ton of information. Get the most out of it.
And then just real quick before I open it up to the public, um, the four point nine CPI, do you project it? That's uh, you know, at some point going to come down? I mean, is it projecting just because of what we're finding ourselves in? Uh, don't need a long answer to that if you don't have it, but um, the other is, is your understanding CalPERS hitting three point three, you're focusing on that, hoping for more, but you've budgeted for a low return, correct?
Sure. So uh, for the CPI question, that's based off of the December CPI number. As far as will, will the CPI number come down? Uh, I know that the number as of April is, I think it'll be three point six or three point nine. So we have seen the CPI come down. Hopefully that trend continues, but if you're kind of looking, you know, we do base it off of the December number. But um, you know, just based off of the April number, if we were to use that, it's a three point six or three point nine. Um, as far as the CalPERS and what we budget, um, for fiscal year twenty fourth, the upcoming year, that's based off of the valuation report that CalPERS gave to us last July, August. And so this three point three percent number, we're not going to budget for that until, you know, I think two thousand and twenty six is when we'll start paying for that. So when we do this again prior to two thousand and twenty six, if we're right about that three point three percent return, that's when we're gonna have to start paying for it. So this is, it won't affect us in twenty four. It's not going to affect us in twenty five. It really is kind of the outside years where if they do hit three point three percent, that's where it'll impact us.
Yeah, thank you. And this is just be a follow up comment that you can bring back at the next council meeting when you do the presentation is I just also think it's important that when everyone's looking at Measure M, looking at the budgets, looking at the impact of the economy and where we're going, that we don't lose sight of as we, we look to how we're going to grow, um, the impact it has on the level of service based upon existing staffing, based and based on growth and projections. To include CFDs, so that what we don't do is we don't get behind, whether it's Lagoon Valley, whether it's future growth. I think at some point, not in the next meeting, but to, to be really having a robust conversation just to make sure that uh, we're actually looking to what's going to look like in the years to come as we budget and we project. Thank you for the presentation. I'm gonna open up to the public for comment. Come on up. Thank you for waiting.
Hi, Alicia Minion. I live in District Six. And uh, recently we had the um, cleanup day. And I know that came out of the budget, I think at least fifty thousand, and I want to say thank you to the city. And not only did I get to throw away trash, I, I got a hot dog, which I really appreciated. It was great. And not only did I get to throw away trash, I, I got a hot dog, which I really appreciate. It was great. So thank you so much, and I'm glad you're continuing that. But, okay, so I do have some questions. So, um, one, Councilwoman Roberts, I agree with you. I think a grant writer, if we employed it in, we employed someone in-house, I think it'll pay for itself. My worry about continuing to use a third-party grant writer is how do you know that person isn't, you know, giving that opportunity to somebody else? I mean, you don't know who they're telling. So you, they, they could tell every city in the state, everybody that they know could end up, and they'll be like, yeah, I'll, you can pay me and I'll write this grant for you. And now it's just become more competitive. So that would be one concern. So I'd rather have somebody in-house. In the bond buyer today on the front page, there was an article about a $550 billion new infrastructure bill to cover transportation information networks over five years. I mean, there's so, there's opportunities all the time. So I, I think that's a great idea. So one of the questions I had though, where I wasn't clear on the presentation, is are there, is there any revenue that isn't reflected in the, in, in the budget? So for example, I was thinking development impact fees, were those in the budget? Also, have there been grants that have been applied for? Wondering if that's the case, how much are they for? Like what's the status? Could, could grant money come in this fiscal year or next fiscal year as a result of existing grants you've applied for? And then I was thinking too, as you know, in District Six, a lot of building, more and more houses being built. And then there's projects that I would have thought would have already started. And I'm just wondering, how is the Finance Department being informed about some of these projects that are going to start being built, will ultimately bring in revenue, right? Property tax revenue. And so, for example, there's the apartment project by the bus station on Ellison Drive. I don't see that happening. There's the senior affordable housing off South Orchard. I don't see anything happening. Lagoon Valley, I think they were supposed to have houses built by now. And they had milestones they were supposed to meet. And I think the city should have issued a Melrose bond by now. I'm just wondering like, where is that? And so you have these like approved projects, there's a pipeline. But what's, you know, kind of what's the status of those? And then I, I was wondering, Ken, can you take me to the, the, the slide with the Measure M 33 million in commitments?
You're, you're running out of time, but if you just want to ask the question.
Yeah, real quick, that, that one slide, it said 33 million. And I didn't know, was that, was that, oh, 31 million, was that the beginning balance? So all, so Measure M has been, been accruing, been coming in and being accrued since 2018. So that 31.3, is that the beginning balance and entirely all of it is committed? That's what, that's what I was confused on. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you, if you want to answer that question real quick.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So I'll start with the last one first. So for this measure and balances 31.3 million dollars, this is entering, what we're projecting entering into the upcoming fiscal year. This is what we project the balance to be, to be. What this amount doesn't include are amounts that are committed. So we know that there's money that has been budgeted for projects that hasn't been spent yet. That's not in this amount. Same thing with when we had the strategic planning session a couple of weeks ago, we talked about there are other projects that we had funded. I think it was like upwards of $20 million that we're considering commitments. If we were to put that in there, that number jumps up, you know, to 50-plus million. So this really is the uncommitted amount. And it's not from the beginning of the time of Measure M. It's what we're projecting for the upcoming fiscal year, entering the year with. There was a question on, kind of going back to the forecasts and the different projects that are going on. We want to be as fiscally conservative with our forecasts, and I forgot how the saying goes, but kind of not count our, our chicken before the eggs hatch or, you know, I know I messed that up, but hopefully you get what I'm trying to say there. So with our property tax, and when we looked at, we look at assessed values, we work with a consultant on that. For new construction, we get a report from HGO that shows for the past 10 years, this is the level of construction that, new construction that you have. They give kind of different tiers. So if you want to be aggressive with that, you can assume that we're going to be just like every other, the last 10 years. On average, we're going to have this amount of new construction. We use the 50% mark, the 50% tier on sort of new construction. We assume that if you kind of take the average of the last 10 years, for the upcoming year, we're probably going to see 50% of that in new construction. Because of the way that, kind of the, the economy has been going for the next two years in that forecast, we're using the 25% mark. So we don't necessarily look at projects specifically. We look more at sort of like, what has historically happened and kind of use like a tier approach of, you know, if this level of construction occurs, this is how much that would impact our, our property, our revenue forecast going forward. There's a question on DIF, development impact fees don't go to the general fund, so that's not part of this. This is a forecast strictly on the general fund. So things like grant revenue, we report that in a different fund. That would not be reflected. That would all be sort of additional revenue on top of what we're seeing here.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. I was going to, before I make my questions and comment, I got to tell you, since I've been coming here, what, two and a half years, whatever it is, I'm blowing smoke, but I got to tell you, I really appreciate our city manager. Okay, my first question is, where can I find these slides? I found the written document. Maybe they could tell me when I'm gone here. Has the city taken a position with PERS to encourage them to get rid of this ESG? It's not a fiduciary. They're not meeting their fiduciary commitment when they're investing in losing stocks based on some philosophical, what's happening now and what the current thing is. Because it's impacting my tax dollars. Then I guess I'll throw my two cents in on the grant writer. Personally, I, I would like the city to, city manager's doing, I think it's good to contract. As far as the incentive, private contractors have an incentive to either produce, so they don't have a job. I think they stay up on top of that. So personally, and ultimately it's up to you because you spend much more time studying the subject. But at a public agency where I was in command, I use private contractor. Worked very well.
Thank you.
Regarding the slides, I believe they're posted the day after the presentation, so they'll be linked on, on the website if you're looking at the agenda in minutes.
Great, yeah, soon. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Wendy Brecken. My question has to do with, now that we have council members that represent districts, how much of the budget process went towards prioritizing needs? And maybe there could be another study session where you look at prioritizing needs of your district. For example, Councilmember Chapman had talked about flooding before, and maybe there's certain needs there. And I know in, around the Orchard area, there's some really crazy bad roads that need to be replaced. And so, I mean, it's hard to compare apples and oranges and things like that, but it, you know, perhaps maybe some infrastructure needs might be more important than some of the staffing needs. I mean, it's something that you guys have the power to balance. So, I mean, i- if nothing else, it would be interesting to do a study on what your needs are in your district as opposed to the city at large, which is also super important. You're doing a tremendous job with that. So, yeah, so if we could just maybe have a study session per district needs. Also, the DIF can pay for capital improvements. And it'd be interesting to know how much money is in the DIF and, you know, maybe what capital improvements that could cover. I might as well weigh in on the grant writer. I also think that it would be good to have an in-house grant wire, not just for safety, but, you know, maybe also for parks and for community development. There's all kinds of grants. Every so often, when we have an agenda item, I'll look up grants that could be used for the cost of something. And there's always grants that we're not using. I mean, it's easy to find. So also, in the overall scheme of things, it's important to keep in mind that maybe when we are entering, if we do enter a more crisis mode, there are other options for OPEB. So that's the healthcare and the fact that especially we are using Medicare. We're not using Medicare, we're replacing that with something else. And there are other options. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And did you have any comments on that?
I just wanted to clarify one thing on the development impact fees. I'm not sure if maybe this is why it's coming up. When, we had the forecast slide up there that kind of assumed that the 2.5 million for, for capital improvement program funding, that, that's not the only funding that's going to go towards the CIP program. When we have the second budget study session and when our Public Works Department presents the CIP budget, there are other funding sources that are used to fund capital projects. And so if there is confusion, I don't want it to seem like the only capital improvements that are going to be included in that program budget is, is $2 million, and that's all we're doing for the upcoming year. That, what's going to be proposed for the upcoming year is going to include other funding sources like DIF. And so if that is kind of a question that, that'll be clarified when we have the second study session and talk about CIP specifically.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, because everyone else is staff. Bring this back to the council. Any, any other comments from, I think you had a comment.
Yes. Thank you. Part of going out to the public for comments, I had my light on to speak and, or to ask, to share some information. And then I turned it off because I know that the council will be submitting, I'm going to say submitting additional information to the city manager. I believe I got that right at the time that it was open to the council before. So anyway, what I, what I want to say right now is district-specific items. That was, I had two that I was going to make mention of, and I decided to hold back on that and get it back to the city manager, because I've already discussed it with him. And then I said, well, maybe this isn't the time. Let me see where he's at with that. And so, and I think, and you also mentioned, you know, maybe a study session for the council members to look at their individual district needs. And I believe the city manager is looking to do something soon to get additional input from the council members. We had a little talk, and I think that's what you said, made mention of.
So we had a council goal and priority setting session on Friday, May 12th. And I knew before we started that it was two days of work crammed into, to one day. But I do think we got a lot accomplished there. And one of the things that we plan on doing to follow up with council, what the first part of that day was spent on was identifying the remaining priorities of the strategic plan that we had not yet started work on. So everything that we've been focusing on for the most part has been contained in those strategic initiatives of the five-year strategic plan. We've been giving the council quarterly updates on what we've been working on to date. And so really, the first part of the exercise on May 12th was to share with you that now that we're checking off the boxes on some of those items that we are completing or have completed, we now have resources to put into some of the other stuff that's in the strategic plan that we haven't yet completed. Just for the, the viewing public, you know, flood control, standards of cover report on fire station locations, energy sustainability, communication plans, community engagement, those sorts of things. And so those are all within the strategic plan. There is also an opportunity for us that as, when we come back to give you an update of, you know, what we heard that day, I am exploring an opportunity to, to work with the gentleman who helped me facilitate that exercise, to have a little bit more conversation with the council about some of, you know, the conversations that you have with, with our facilitator about, you know, the bigger picture going forward. As far as priorities, you know, what I see happening with those is, is that, you know, it, it, this council has done, in my opinion, a very good job of looking at the, the entire city. But at the same time, when there's been individual needs that rise to a level that the councilmen representing that district, council members, excuse me, representing that district has brought that up to this body and has asked for, you know, you know, some attention to particular needs in that regard. And I think we have examples in District Three, and I think we have good examples in District Four as well. And, and so I think that process will continue. As far as asking for new priorities outside the boundaries of our strategic plan, that's where it's going to get interesting in terms of the discussion, because the strategic plan is kind of that five-year focus, if you will. But that's where we were asking that, on that particular day of, is there anything that's really glaringly missing? That we need to take, that we need to modify that strategic plan? That we need to take something off to put something back on because it's a bigger priority? And that, that particular day, and I know it was, there was a lot going on, it didn't appear as if there was anything that really jumped off the page from the collective group. Now, when we have that follow-up, if there is something that the, the council, you know, reaches consensus on, that there is a bigger need than what's on our strategic plan right now, I'd say that that's a good opportunity to have that dialogue so that we can begin incorporating that into the plan and beginning, you know, the discussion about how do we take resources from here and put them there? So that's forthcoming. But I would just, you know, keep that in mind and we move into that piece that we are working within the, the plan that we have. But it's really up to you, if there's a consensus to modify that, we can certainly, you know, go from there.
So with that, with what the city manager just shared, I'm going, a topic that I have discussed with the city manager, and he has documentation, he's gathering data for, on the issue. And it is safety around Payden Elementary School. Is there, I mean, you know, the need for, I, I don't know what, what it's going to take. It's going to take the city manager and the team, you know?
Here, here's what I would suggest, maybe at the next council meeting, when departments are going to report out, correct? They're going to do a report out. That's probably where we're going to be able to ask the questions of the department heads. Or it's something that we can bring back to a follow-up, because we discussed having a follow-up meeting since we ran out of time at our, our special meeting. And so, so both of those are opportunities for us to focus on maybe diving into adding to a priority.
I just wanted to, there was a reason for me saying that much, because he's already shared with me about funding for the safety around the, of the site would come from STA, Solano Transportation Authority. And they would be doing, they would be getting, receiving their monies for the gear, whatever. And then they would be deciding what district will receive how much of those funds. And Payden would probably be submitted as a need. But it takes, that doesn't happen overnight. It didn't happen in one year. Of course, it may take up to three, four, five years before the money is received and the change made. Three, four, five years, it's a long time to wait. So my question was going to be, would it be possible to front the money and then have it on the STA register for consideration or for, to be received? Knowing we're going to, knowing that we are going to get it, so that we can do something now instead of five years from now? So.
Yeah, from Safe Neighborhoods, maybe it's a conversation we could even have with Darrell STA as far as what opportunities are in front of us. And we can certainly bring it back to a follow-up special council meeting that, that we do. Manager?
Thank you for the comments. I would just suggest that we continue to, to do the homework that we, I promised you. And we can come back with some ideas to, to how to bring this back to council for the bigger conversation. The, the, what's happening right now is that STA is doing their comprehensive update for safer out to schools for the entire region. And I, I will compliment our, our folks in, in Public Works. They were very proactive in this because they have experience and understand that those that are ready to, with projects, with ideas, are going to be the ones first in line, are going to be, you know, project-ready. are going to be the ones first in line, are going to be, you know, project-ready, if you will. And those are usually the ones that are, you know, get better success with the grant awards. So our team there is working diligently on that. But we were, I think, just maybe one or two cities that really reached out to the community and said, what are your needs? And so we're working on deciphering on that and putting those into really describable projects so that STA can rank those in awarding when the time comes. So we're doing everything we can in that regard. I do not know if the grant is a reimbursable type grant so that if we were to front it, if it could be reimbursed because there's plenty of others out there that, you know, are in need of those funds. So we'll check into all that. And then what I would suggest is, is that we can bring that back as some kind of conversation to the council sooner or later to talk about that overall project. And then we can begin the discussion with the council about the prioritizing of that.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation tonight. I know that we're going to need a motion, but thank you for comments from the floor tonight. I mean, it's always interesting to hear a different perspective. I do ask that in the future, staff continue to monitor what CalPERS is doing trending over time because sometimes there is changes in policies and we're relying on them. And then the impacts then are on our own budget. And so I know I've heard a lot of concerns from people on that. And so with that, I know you all work hard, appreciate all the time and effort. I've seen you carry those binders around, and I think you need to invest in a cart or something because somehow I think that's unhealthy. So councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the augment for the $50,000 for the kids and also that we take a 10-minute break as soon as we vote.
Post the motion, yes, you'll get that. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, thank you for the presentation, and we're going to, we're going to stand in recess for 10 minutes. I have to put my microphone on. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for being patient, taking a short recess. Got a lot of notes, but it looks like we're going to start with 9C. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is an update on another housing subject. As council's fully aware, we have been coming to the council during a variety of individual council meetings with different topics on the subject of housing because it is such an important element of what we do here. And this was something that we talked about very briefly at our goal-setting session because we have been spending a lot of time on it. This is close to the last piece on this. I won't spoil the conclusion of this presentation, but there's a few other pieces that we have for the council. But tonight, we wanted to introduce the topic of inclusionary housing. And we have two experts here. We have Emily Cantu and Erin Morris from our Housing and Community Services Department and our Community Development Department, respectively. They're here to walk you through what this is and what it can be used for to accomplish for the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to them.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. First, we wanted to start with a little refresher of a few meetings we've had recently, some informational presentations. That talked about the city's adopted land use vision as that is articulated in the general plan and all the various implementation tools that you have. On April 11, you discuss the general plan, how growth is managed, how the general plan is implemented through specific plans, the land use and development code, the development review process, development agreements. There's a job housing balance that you're always taking into consideration. and infrastructure considerations, and the development impact fee. On the 19th, you talked about housing development, historical trends, existing housing types, developments underway in the pipeline projects that came up this evening, what guides actions on housing development, what you can do, what affects housing costs, and how housing is important to economic development, including Travis Air Force Base. On the 25th, you talked about growth management, the housing strategy and the housing element. And tonight, we're going to do a study session on the, on inclusionary housing, as Aaron Bush mentioned. So in overview of our presentation, we are going to start with a little background. We'll talk about the city's strategic plan, housing, and how that caused the development of a housing strategy and how the housing strategy fit into the housing element and how the housing element is supporting the housing strategy. We'll talk about the current, Vacaville's current affordable housing model, the definition of affordable housing, an inclusionary housing overview, policy options if the council should decide to move forward with some inclusionary housing policies, and next steps. So on June 28th, if you'll recall, the city completed or approved, excuse me, the city council approved a housing strategy. There are three goals in that strategy: to encourage a diversity of housing choices, address regulatory and financial barriers to needed housing production, and create new initiatives and programs to address housing needs. As I mentioned, that came out of the city adopted strategic plan, protecting Vacaville's quality of life by promoting housing for all and to develop a housing strategy to encourage a variety of housing, to support economic development, to address a gap in housing, including missing middle and your mid-rise type housing, to plan for the regional housing needs allocation, that's included in your housing element, and the depletion of city cash and city-owned land. Particularly in the housing strategy, there's goal three, strategy 3.4, that the city should consider an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires or may require a certain percentage of housing to be included in each residential project to meet the needs of very low, low and moderate income levels of affordability. Some additional background would be related to Vacaville's housing stock. You'll see that the majority of housing is single-family detached with a small amount, less than 20% of your missing middle idea of housing with duplex, triplex, and small multifamily, and a very small percentage for medium and large multifamily development. And again, the housing strategy goals and implementation strategies are embedded within the housing element. So all of those strategies are in the housing element so that we can look at analysis and implementation moving forward. And again, there are various policies in the housing element that also identify the need for a variety of housing types at various levels of affordability. And one specifically that was embedded into the housing element is what we're doing tonight is discussing and looking into the inclusionary housing. So housing that is, this slide talks about the definition of housing that is affordable housing. And what that means is housing that is affordable based upon a monthly housing cost of 30% or less of the income of a low, which is 80% of the area median income, or a very low, which is 50% of area median income, family's household, household income. The median income, since the writing of the staff report, the income levels were changed. Those are updated by the federal Department of Housing and Urban Development for Solano County on an annual basis. That happens in May. So between writing the staff report and now, the income limits have been updated. Those are reflected on this slide, so they're a little bit different than your staff report. And the median income is now 112,600, and that's for a family of four. And for an 80% or a low-income household of four, it's 91,500. And for a 50% household, 50% of area median income, for a very low-income household, their annual income is 57,200. I did have some information about, for you about the number of affordable housing units that we deem affordable housing, also because they're deed-restricted. So they have a deed restriction. They have an agreement with the city and sometimes with other agencies that require the rents to be restricted over a period of time. Traditionally, with the city of Vacaville, it's 55 years, which came from former redevelopment law. So it's over the long term. There are currently 989 affordable units that exist in 17 projects with deed restrictions with the city, as well as 60 affordable units under construction, that's Pony Express. And there are 209 affordable units in the pipeline. I know the Allison Transit Development Project came up this evening, as well as Oak Grove Project on Orchard. And you've authorized entering into an agreement with Habitat for, with Humanity for a homeownership affordable project. In addition, there are 284 additional affordable units that are privately owned. And those private developers entered into agreements with federal and/or state agencies to keep the rents deed-restricted. And really, without that legal mechanism to keep the rents low, any housing that's developed, even if it's, you know, stated or intended to be affordable, they can change the rents to market rate at any time. So the deed restriction is a key to maintaining that affordability for our Vacaville residents. And then we just wanted to share some examples of those existing units that we talked about. These are just some examples. So the Rocky Hill Veterans Development Apartments, which is one of the newest developments of affordable housing. Vazquez Deli includes a couple affordable units, Senior Manor out on Lawrence Drive, and Prior Habitat for Humanity Duplex Project, and Saratoga Senior, just again, a few examples. So, as you know, the city does not currently have an inclusionary housing ordinance or an impact fee to provide funding for affordable housing development. So instead, we used to have a redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency generated $7 million a year and set aside funds to fund affordable housing development and projects, programs, and activities. One, I wanted to mention one, kind of what, what were those funds used for? One focus was to assemble properties, so buy properties from individual ownership, get them under one single ownership to conduct rehabilitation, and then improve the long-term management of those properties over time, with just the one owner instead of multiple owners. And then also, we did new construction. Again, examples are the Habitat Project that you saw a picture of, Senior Manor in Sycamore are just a few. So it was a combination of rehabilitation and new construction. So when RDA, when redevelopment was dissolved, this 7 million went away. So we know that was no longer available. There hasn't been a permanent local source since that time. However, the city was very creative and created and implemented a development and disposition strategy for city-owned affordable housing properties. And an update on that strategy is included as attachment one to your staff report. It describes the city's plan to sell or develop 63 housing properties by using the sales proceeds or the land to attract affordable housing developers and then leverage that land and the small amount of cash that we did have still available to build affordable housing. That plan, so currently, all the affordable housing cash has been dedicated to projects, which is really exciting that we're going to get a lot of projects done that the council approved. However, this plan does rely heavily on federal, state, and, you know, other regional or local sources, which makes it challenging for the developers. Those funding sources are highly competitive. I was looking at one from last year, and there were $2 billion worth of applications submitted. And the state agency had $250 million available. So high, high demand, not as much money as needed. So, and then again, as mentioned a little bit earlier, there are a limited supply of city-owned sites. And the housing strategy is almost complete. If, as you can see in attachment one, it's either completed, there's some in progress, and then just a few that can potentially be used to leverage affordable housing. So that's why tonight, we are here to look at and, or discuss with you a potential opportunity to generate affordable housing through development or, and/or fees. And that would be inclusionary housing. And I'm going to pass it on to Erin Morris to continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So inclusionary housing is a local zoning ordinance or land use policy that either requires or encourages, let's focus on requires, housing developers to include a specified percentage of very low, low and/or moderate income housing in new residential developments. And inclusionary housing, as a kind of a broad category that includes a variety of approaches, is actually considered to be one of the strongest tools that cities have available to them to facilitate, facilitate both the production of affordable housing by private developers and the production of affordable housing with, with funds that the city can gather out of these programs. One of the key things inclusionary housing does is it provides opportunities for lower-income households to live in higher resource areas. And in all areas of the community, it's considered a tool that helps address those systemic barriers that keep poverty concentrated in certain parts of a city and don't allow people to have mobility. A few other things it can do is it can leverage the money and the profit that comes out of private development and create essentially a durable public benefit. That public benefit being that the development happens, and we have these great market-rate homes, but then there's an enduring affordable housing, deed-restricted housing that comes out of it, has an enduring quality of 30 to 55 years. It'll be affordable to the first tenants and all future tenants, unaffected by rising rental rates and other things. Next slide, please. So inclusionary housing is used differently in different communities. One approach is to look at, and a lot of it goes down to how it's required. But essentially, it can actually produce new housing interspersed within an existing, a planned development area. So let's say you have like a 1,000-unit housing development. If you said 10% of those units are going to be deed-restricted affordable, it would place those in a planned way within that development. Funds are a huge positive factor with inclusionary housing requirements. If an ordinance, if it's, if it's required, it actually produces the funds that ultimately go into, in our case, Housing and Community Services to specifically produce units and/or rehab units and/or do other housing programs that benefit the community. And I also want to make sure the council's clear that while a lot of times it's easy to think of inclusionary housing as a requirement for residential development, many cities actually require a housing impact fee for commercial development because it's recognized that there's a connection between creating new jobs and the need for housing. So that's another part of the inclusionary housing toolkit is a fee related to commercial development. So I want to go on, and last thing I want to say before, sorry, Emily, is that the funds that come out of inclusionary housing can be used because the council would be deciding how to use these funds, in particular, to target special needs housing, like housing for teachers, housing for veterans, housing for active military. Again, it provides that funding source that the council can decide where you want to put that benefit and which parts of our community, hopefully many parts of the community, that you want to, to help. So now we can go to the next slide. Thank you, Emily. So there's a couple different, there's actually many different ways that inclusionary housing is implemented. And I'll start by saying that there's actually only one city in Solano County that has an inclusionary program, and that is the city of Benicia. They've had theirs for a number of years. They're actually in a process right now of updating it. But within the county, every city is currently, either they've had a study session with their council or they're planning one because this is a really hot topic in California as a whole and in our region because of its potential to produce affordable housing. So many cities that don't have these ordinances are looking at them. So typically, one way this shows up and actually gets, works in certain communities is that you'll have a new residential project, as I was just explaining a little bit earlier, and they're required to have 10%, for example, or 15% of the units within that development be deed-restricted affordable. The law requires, however, that there are always alternatives. The developer has the ability to do alternatives. So in some cases, they're required to do the 10%, or they're able to pay a fee, an in-lug fee, if you will. And that in-lug fee goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. There's other scenarios where different cities have different, different menus of options. So it could be that, yes, you have to dedicate X percentage to affordable, but if you do it at higher levels of affordability, the number of units goes down. And if you do it at lower levels of affordability, you'll do more affordable units. So I think my point I want to make is we're not going to get into detail, deep dive into all the options tonight. But if we, ultimately, the city decides to move forward with this, the work we would do is figuring out what solution might work best for Vacaville related to what this, what this city council wants to accomplish. So I'll go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, any inclusionary housing requirement must, must include alternatives to providing onsite affordable homes. And these alternatives can be constructing that number of units elsewhere in the city. Again, this is all subject to council approval, of course. Rehabbing existing affordable housing that maybe is deed-restricted but is in really in need of repair and getting credit for putting that money into that project. Purchase of existing apartment complexes that are not deed-restricted as a way of then deed-restricting them and creating affordable housing. Dedicating land to the city to build housing on, et cetera. There's a lot of different options that can be explored as alternatives to onsite. So if the council ultimately decides to move forward with this, and we do have a housing element program that says that we will at least explore this in the next half of the year, there would be a NEXUS study and a feasibility study where a consultant would help the city look at the connection between building new homes and building non-residential development and the need for affordable housing. And they would do an economic feasibility analysis that would look at residential market activity and how imposing this requirement could affect that. And they'd also really, they really just get into the nitty-gritty of the basic economics of housing development. And this would be a collaborative effort with study sessions with council, roundtables with members of the development community, interested members of the public, et cetera. And I think the goal of all this is figuring out what are the maximum requirements for, that would be able to be borne by the market that would ultimately produce housing fees or housing units? And then also, what's the minimum that it would take in terms of those fees to actually create the housing? So it's kind of looking at both sides of the, the equation. Next slide, please. And so again, then the other components of the NEXUS and feasibility study would be residential market activity, not just looking at Vacaville over the last five years, but also looking at other Solano County cities. These prototypes, they actually develop prototype developments like that happened in Vacaville. So they would do an apartment prototype, a single-family residential prototype, attached single-family prototype. And then they look at how that type of development, what it costs and what it could bear in terms of these inclusionary requirements. And then ultimately, the feasibility assessment is really important. Cities that do move forward with these programs, one of the biggest concerns you have to have is how much can you require without ultimately completely stymieing residential development? Because clearly, there's a relationship between what we require and what people want to build. So those are the basic components of the, the kind of study and the work we would do if we were moving forward with this. So in conclusion, this is the fourth study session on this housing theme. And I realize it's a lot of information to take in. We try to kind of keep it short and sweet. We will be back with, it's either two or three additional housing discussions. But there's going to be a need to bring all these different topics together. And among the other topics, among the topics that we've explored so far, we need to talk about objective design standards. We need to talk about the urban reserve because those are also components in housing and, and growth management and how we plan our community. are also components in housing and growth management and how we plan our community. So, I'm looking forward to more time with all of you, and Emily, I'm sure is too, and we're happy to take any questions that you have at this point.
Thank you. And I also think that there's probably one other session of just maybe a wrap-up of pulling it all together, so. Thank you. I know this is an important subject as we try to balance everything from our growth and our housing and the implications, especially with the 180-page report that goes along with this. Light reading, but I do appreciate all the work that you're doing, and it's fairly important that we strike a balance to what the expectations are going to be and not lose the vision of the city. And, you know, how can we do that? And I'm sure some, there'll be more details in what that looks like for what the planned growth could be for the city. Just a quick question. Somewhere in this, I do believe that the projected growth annually still is around 325 units. Is that correct?
It's been about an average of 380 units over the last eight-year RENA cycle.
Okay, great. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you for the presentation. I know we've been talking about some aspect of what we call inclusionary zoning, so appreciate the information. So, one thing I'm going to just request, in the past, I think it's important for this conversation, in the past, there's been a map that's been shared about where subsidized or deed-restricted housing exist, along with units associated with those. So there's one, there's a spreadsheet, and then there's a map. I'd just like to request if that can be sent to all council members. Number two, can you please clarify why on city sites? So, when we talk about deed-restricted or subsidized, please clarify why city-owned sites?
I think as Emily explained, the city's focus since redevelopment was dissolved has been on city-owned sites because we don't have an impact fee program, we don't have funding sources that originate from the city. So, the city's focus has exclusively been on sites that we own. If the council moved forward with an inclusionary program, it would apply to privately-owned sites proposed for new residential or mixed-use or commercial development. So we broadly capture all kinds of development, and we would no longer be focusing exclusively on city-owned sites. I mean, that said, we still do have some city-owned sites that would lend themselves to housing, so it's not that they're out of the picture, they're just not the only, the only tool we would have.
So, with that, with respect to RENA, if some type of, so if we adopt some type of inclusionary zoning that would allow or designate low-income or very low-income units within that given area, would that remove it from other areas, particularly the market area, where we continue to support concentrating poverty in that area?
I think there's a couple of questions here, but I think you're asking about the housing element and its designation of certain sites for low-income housing, which is different than having an inclusionary housing program. Our housing element, as I presented to council, unfortunately, a bit at length, we have picked, we've chosen sites throughout the city of Vacaville where we've told the state, these are the sites where very low, low, and below moderate income housing units are going to happen. And it happens that our city-owned sites are typically designated that way because they've been the sites we've had where we can produce housing. So, if an inclusionary zoning ordinance was adopted, it would be a tool on even those city-owned sites when development occurs to get a deeper level of affordability or to ensure affordability. But if you're asking about taking those sites in the market area out of the housing element, that would be a conversation for when we bring the housing element back to council in late June.
My question is if we have addition, so my understanding is we can't remove low-income designated areas unless we place them somewhere else. Is that correct?
If the council wishes to remove planned housing sites from this housing element that we'll be bringing on June 27th, we would have to find replacement sites that we could prove to the state had the same likelihood of developing with affordable housing as the sites that are currently in the housing element.
All right, so, sorry, so California State, aside from that, the state requires us to make sure we don't reduce the number that we currently have, right? So, in the past, the city has swapped land. My understanding, that's what happened with the Brown Street spot that was being pursued for sheds for homeless folks in that particular program with the spot down here. Is that, is that something, so when we talk about inclusionary zoning, is that something that can also be worked into this process?
Mr. City Manager.
So, a couple of thoughts here. So, RENA establishes the number of units that were allocated to have for income categories. RENA is simply, do we have land available to build those units? The inclusionary housing piece is a tool to help us actually physically build those. And the reason that you've seen them on the city properties is because affordable housing builders don't do affordable housing on their own. They need some kind of subsidy, in my experience, 10 times out of 10, to make an affordable housing project pencil. And so what we've been able to offer, because we do not have an inclusionary housing fee or dedication requirement, what we've had to offer is former redevelopment land that the city now owns. So that's why you see that model, and that's what we've been saying, is that that's why that model can't really be counted on to exist going into the future because, one, we're running out of sites, and, two, as you've pointed out tonight and prior, they are fairly concentrated because they are all within the former redevelopment boundary, which just so happens to be in that area. So, the example of what you're describing in terms of those particulars, I don't believe that those sites were RENA sites. And so, trading is something different. The no net zero loss in RENA is that we have to meet that, we have to demonstrate that we have land zone to accommodate that number of units. If we take something out, we have to put something in so that we meet that minimum number for that income category. But the property swap that you're referring to, I don't believe that the Brown Street was a RENA number because we determined that it is not really a suitable housing location because of the proximity to the airport, and certainly, this piece of property right here was not. That's more of a historic issue with, between the county and the city on that particular matter.
Thank you. So, what determines concentrated poverty? So like, if the goal of inclusionary zoning is to make sure we don't concentrate poverty in one particular area, what, I mean, is there a certain definition or parameter or metric that's used?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Silva. We have reached out to our housing element consultant so that we're able to respond to that question on June 27th. We have a meeting planned with them about a week and a half from now. So more on that, I think, with the housing element. With inclusionary housing, it creates the housing, it creates the funding source, but there's a lot of room to explore and set up the program to address your concern about concentrating all of the housing in one part of the city. But the housing element topic, we will have information for you on June 27th.
Thank you. And then, you know, we're talking about, you know, something that's more inclusive and spread out. What are their char, I mean, from a community development perspective, what are characteristics of areas that have concentrated poverty? What determines, what characteristics, what characteristics classify area that has concentrated poverty? Like, what's the concern with that? Why would we want to pursue inclusionary zoning?
Inclusionary zoning would allow us to have funds to essentially make affordable housing projects happen in different parts of the city. So, we'll talk about this more on June 27th, but one of the thrusts behind the draft housing element that I presented as a study session and we're going to bring back for adoption is we've introduced new sites in new areas of the city that have not been planned for higher-density housing. Those sites can, in fact, be developed with affordable housing, but going back to what Emily was sharing about our approach so far and what Erin was sharing about our lack of funding, inclusionary housing would provide us with that funding tools to be able to offer a developer or a landowner something that would help them make that affordable housing happen on these distributed sites. So I think that's the, inclusionary housing is a tool, cities have used it to concentrate low-income housing in one part of the city. I'm thinking back to my time at the city of San Jose, everything was in District 7. It was all down there until people started to get upset about that, and then it started to get distributed. City of Santa Rosa, same thing. There was one area that had all of the low-income housing, and then it kind of had, it started to change. So, again, but without a funding source, the city does not have a way of facilitating affordable housing in other parts of the city beyond where we own land.
And then, so regarding the, so one topic that came up in Cal cities was about in-lu fees, and so there seemed to be different opinions from different electives throughout the state. And some of the folks that were speaking up weren't saying anything necessarily positive. I don't really want to reiterate what they're saying, but to your knowledge, what are the concerns or is there any controversy regarding in-lu fees?
A lot of developers, most market-rate developers that I've worked with would much prefer if the fee is set at a level that they can tolerate to pay a fee, the city will take care of producing the housing, and they'll produce the market-rate housing units. One of the challenges within in-lu fees is that affordable housing is very expensive to build, and it's more expensive to build than market-rate housing built by private parties. So one of the benefits that many cities have realized is if you require or are able to encourage the developer to do the onsite units, either in the form of, let's say you have a townhouse building that's, you know, 50 or 60 units, and like 10% of them are deed-restricted, or you have a thousand-unit subdivision and you're able to feather in an apartment complex that the developer builds and deed-restricts, a lot of times, the city can get more bang for the city's buck if the developer's building the housing because it's going to be less expensive, it's going to happen faster, and it can be sequenced with other things. The in-lu fee, though, is popular because market-rate developers are not affordable housing developers. And so it's two different businesses, it's two different methods of operation, and these are the exact topics that we would be discussing in more depth as if we move forward with an inclusionary studies, trying to find the balance of achieving what the city wants and also something that can be supported by the market, et cetera.
And, thank you. And so the last question, or maybe more of a point, so I know we're focused on, or the focus on rental units, but I'd like for us to also consider or talk about different ownable units. So even like how you just mentioned, if the cost is higher for subsidized units, and ultimately, the goal for, I know it's, maybe not everybody feels that way, but my polls with young adults, albeit they're maybe skewed because they're at college, they want to be able to purchase a home, they want something to be able to be affordable in that sense. So, I'm curious to see what recommendations there are as far as how do we mix in those type of units within a development that are ownable. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
My question is just exactly what Councilmember Silva was finishing with. So, if you have a rental or a house that you have deed-restricted, and so it's going to be qualified for low income or even very low income, I mean, that's terrific, that family has a place to be, and it's in a nice neighborhood, and I think that's wonderful, except that, then when they move on, they don't really have any equity, and the housing model has always been, you know, you have a starter home, and then you move up, and then, you know, so that doesn't happen if you've been in deed-restricted housing, and then you don't have, you don't have anything when you finish in that. So, I wondered about the, if in-lu fees could be used for credit toward first-time buying homeownership so that, so that sounds like the same thing and something like we'll probably discuss next time, or?
We will, in fact, discuss that next time, but at a very high level, cities had some pretty poor experiments that didn't work out very well in the early 2000s with deed-restricted ownership housing because it's complicated. But my understanding is there are new models that allow the homeowner not just to get equity, but to get some additional equity out of their investment, and we'll have to explore that because I'm hearing the interest in an ownership, ownership units, and I know Emily and I are going to be, with our consultants' help, really looking at how that could work in addition to the first-time homebuyer programs and the other housing programs.
I was going to add real quickly, I know, just an example of a potential model that you could look at is that there's models where you share the appreciation on the home so the homebuyer can still take that equity and build their wealth and move on while the city gets a share of it. And the idea is that, you know, you purchase the home at a lower cost than the market, and so the intent wasn't for you to get rich, if you will, but a sharing of the equity, and then the city can use that portion of the equity that they've shared to put back into affordable homeownership opportunities, typically through, like Erin mentioned, a first-time homebuyer program.
And I will just say, it seems like that we have to really explore something like this because we're running out of land, and there's not a lot of people standing in line to say, hey, let's build affordable housing for you. So we need to see how to best do it. So I appreciate the information and the work on the subject.
Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you. Just covered one of the topics I was going to talk about, but, so the next one I was going to ask was, where do ADUs fit in into the inclusionary? Because I know those have their own restrictions and different requirements coming down from the state as well. Like, if a private owner or homeowner wanted to build a deed-restricted ADU in their backyard for rent, how does that fit in with our numbers?
So if a homeowner wants to build an ADU in their yard, they don't need to, they used to have to deed-restrict it, they don't have to anymore, and they likely wouldn't because then they have the flexibility on the rents. But in the context of new development and an inclusionary requirement, and I was actually looking at how both Benicia and Walnut Creek address this issue, there are scenarios where a city allows ADUs to be deed-restricted as the affordable housing, and I was, I think it was Benicia, they actually set a different affordability level if you're doing an ADU as you're deed-restricted versus if you were doing like an apartment unit or a single-family home. But ADUs absolutely can be in the mix with deed-restricted inclusionary housing.
Okay, and kind of on the ADU-ish type homes, I know other states do. I know Oregon's fairly big on, especially in the Portland area, is like actual, like legitimate tiny homes, not like the tiny sheds or anything, but the fully-built-out smaller, like studio homes that are like 500 or 600 square foot, where they're essentially like ADUs, but they're standalone. What is the city's minimum size to be considered a dwelling for a home?
I don't, I don't think we have one. Under the old impact fee schedule, there was literally no incentive for anyone to build any house that was small because the fee was the same, whether it was 1,000 square feet or whether it was large. But I don't think we have a minimum size. There probably are some state fire codes and building codes that are out there that might inform my knowledge, but, you know, I don't think we have a minimum size.
Okay, yeah, because the other states I've seen, like tiny home communities where you can get like an acre lot, and you can put quite a few of these on there where they're standalone, they're not butted up next to each other, so you have your individual private space, but it's kind of like the size of a small studio apartment, but you have your own little area. But I'd be curious about, yeah, if the city does have a minimum size buried somewhere in an ordinance, because I know a lot of cities do, like, it's like 490 square feet or 500 square feet. But, yeah, I'm excited to see what goes on with this, yeah, with the develop, the fee and lieu, and I've also seen other ones like dedication of land in lieu of, yeah, building inclusionary housing.
I've seen that model a lot where there's a piece of land that's growing weeds, and that was a site that was dedicated to the city to satisfy a development requirement. I know a lot of those sites in places I've worked before, so it is, it would absolutely be part of the menu of options, but I think if the city's interest is in producing affordable housing, it can't all happen instantly, so a patch of land can sit fallow for a while and then turn into something, but that is one of the menu of options for an inclusionary ordinance.
And on the slide, you mentioned that we had to have an alternative to, it's required that we have an alternative.
A menu of options, yes.
Okay, and that would be, it gets figured out with staff during the development agreement. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yeah, just briefly, thank you for the presentation. Definitely interested in having the conversation. I guess my concern is I don't want to make moderate and low-density housing more expensive. I'm more leaning towards trying to find ways that we can incentivize them to build what we want, but not also, you know, for families of four to be able to find, you know, a three or four-bedroom home that they need to live in as well. You know, I want to make sure that we're not making it harder for them to do it. One of the, just building on some of my colleagues' comments related to ownership and shared equity, has it ever been tried where the city owns an apartment complex and then sells Has it ever been tried where the city owns an apartment complex and then sells the individual units in the apartment for a shared equity type of purchase? Cause I mean, I agree, there is a benefit to equity or ownership in something. And so, but I, I see it with, you know, smaller sized homes. But I'm wondering if there are any examples that you're familiar with or aware of that are almost like an apartment complex where people may have some of those opportunities or a lower entry point for homeownership.
One of the models that comes to mind, Emily may have others, is the housing land trust model. And it's typically a nonprofit owns the land and then they sell the homes to buyers who get loans that qualify to buy them at lower rents or lower rates. And then ultimately similar to the scenario that the vice mayor and I were discussing, if they, they build equity and then if they're, if they're ready to sell and get it, they get a certain percentage of that gain. And then they move on and someone else comes in, that's the, the land trust, housing land trust model is similar to that, but typically it's a nonprofit, not the city. I don't know if Emily, if you even.
I'm thinking something like the Villas or Quinn's Crossing, something large like you see over off in North Texas on Lion Road over there. Like something that size where maybe there's a lower entry for people to get into owning their first home. But I'm interested to have a conversation and see where it goes. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Inclusionary housing, it's very interesting. It's, I don't know how, it's late. I don't know how to talk about it. But I just, I just wanted to, I guess, my first notes is Jason Roberts comments, Councilman Roberts. The density they refer into, that is seen as a part of the missing middle housing complex throughout a lot of places in California. That is achieved with moderate to high density cottage style townhomes, cottage style residences. Where you'll have a kind of hexagon structure where they have attached walls or detached in a very common area. They're able to lower the cost of construction to therefore they're, they might only be 900 units square feet. And it lowers the cost, lowers very entry and allows for either renting or ownership or a lower cost per square foot. That is, that is a model that's very popular. One comes, comes to mind Walnut Creek in Westwood, California. So Westwood, California traditionally has some amazing cottage style developments to allow for that density and that privacy. You have that common area courtyard feel, but it'll lower the cost. So that is something that is a part of that missing middle structure that we can do. You know, I, I just kind of just, I actually stopped working earlier today. It's kind of actually focused on this a little bit. And I just thought like, what are things that are going on in California that can help with the inclusionary housing? One of the things you talked about in the in lieu program, sometimes it doesn't work, right? The fee, the fee never, I never say never, it hardly ever accounts for the amount of money we need to build a school or build a apartment complex. It does work better when we work with the developer and it's kind of like a weighted average mean where you're going to have to have some units that have a higher cost to offset the lower costs. It's math. You will not be able to achieve that without having, some units will have a higher cost. Or you have to say, hey, we're going to put in higher cost units in this development to, to offset the cost to construct the, the same units in development at a lower price point. But that can be achieved by offering density bonuses. If we give them density bonuses, say, if you build this, either a community with ownership or renting, we will grant you a higher density bonus to offset the cost to bring these units for sale or rent to the community. That therefore you can hit that maybe 10% number in ownership or renting in this community. That would both meet our inclusionary housing requirements, but allow them to make it profitable. I think we have to make sure that works. You know, the housing trust fund, other places are doing that, same thing. It's kind of redevelopment act. The housing trust funds a developer comes, but the big part about it is pilot tech, big business. They can invest, if they want to come to our city, a part of the inclusionary housing can be for commercial companies to invest in that fund. So therefore that money goes towards development to help lower the cost. So we can kick money in to help developers say, hey, listen, we need assistance. Good thing we have this money. So I think that's something we really need to focus on. The fee in lieu of, the fee in lieu program essentially is if you're not going to, if you're not going to build it because you're a corporation, put money in the till. If you're going to, if you're going to invest in our city, you need to put money into the till that allows city of Vacaville to contribute to private party development to help lower the cost of construction to give us that ability to have the inclusionary housing. I think if we really, really emphasize that, we have a win-win scenario where we can get companies or come to Vacaville, but they will invest in us. They will provide that funds and we make that a requirement, they will do it. They'll have to. You know, the comment for, you know, Councilwoman Silva, I, the concentrated poverty, the whole role and goal of forming inclusionary housing is, is not really, is not to find a way to break up like a pool table, a density of concentrated poverty. It's trying to strategize and diversify housing throughout the city to allow for diversification of lower income homes or lower, lower cost point homes or lower cost point rent to be throughout the whole city of Vacaville. The intent isn't to say, hey, this area has a low income, we're going to, we're going to push the houses out throughout the city to therefore make the inclusionary housing work. By default, it happens a lot. But the whole point of inclusionary housing is to diversify housing and allow that new development and existing developments throughout the city to help spread out that wealth and allow people to live and diversify together. That's, that's the thing. And it's hard. Like when I looked at inclusionary housing, I actually pulled, I actually read her own stuff. And it's 180 pages and, you know, we gotta do, we gotta put a actual, like a fake person to this number. Like when it comes to inclusionary housing, we're going to have people say, we don't want those people next to us. We don't want those people. Or we're bringing this element to the city. It's already here. Cause every day I drop my kids off to school and that's that person. So I pulled numbers with California Teacher Association and I pulled her own data for AMI for 80%. Right now, the average teacher makes $2,301 in California. But we want to use that 30% number that goes for rent burden or mortgage burden. They are at 1557. That's crazy. It's like, you know, we, if inclusionary housing is necessary, we're going to have to find some ways to make sure the teachers, our educators, our healthcare professionals, our, our, our public service has the ability to live in our communities because we really put that number down on paper. It's very scary. I mean, someone that makes $91,000, 30% of that number is 2287. Like it's like, these are people that work at Travis Air Force Base. Like we have to find ways to build. And we, and like Michael, I talked about it numerous times as council, as council. Like we can work with the developers, some in the room right now, and we can build with like, say examples like Portofino did. You can do high density shared driveways to lower the cost of construction, to bring products to Vacaville that you can get a cost per unit at about 475 to five and a quarter. The loan limit is 680,725. So you can bring units to Vacaville far below the median, like the loan amounts and requirements and get it done. I mean, I would love for someone to speak on it, but I think we need to really focus on if we want to create homeownership. If we couple a housing fund to allow someone to say, hey, the cost to enter that property is 475, five and a quarter. We have a fund that either give you rental assistance of subsidies, or we can give you assistance in the closing cost or down payment. There's numerous programs already out there in California. I just can't talk about a lot of them. That would give you 100% of the down payment. If the city can help homeowners with the closing cost, they could enter that property. If they can show they can afford the payment, like there's, we just need to actually take, pay attention to what's already available and work with. The state of California has bond programs and developers to, I think really come together. It sounds scary, but if we allow them to build at scale and make sure they have a weighted average of the units they produce, we can hit that number. It's, we, like I said in the last meeting, I want, I want Vacaville to be such, so prosperous that I'm aligned. Someone that has a $270,000 unit is standing right behind me, say Journey Coffee. And the person in front of us is the CEO that's at a $4 million property on Vine Street. Like that's, that's awesome. But we, we, in order to create that, we gotta make sure we hit both sides of, of that scale. And so I think, I know it can happen. I don't think, that's what I do for a living. I, I know it can happen. We just got to allow, there's going to be density. There's going to, maybe density and certain things we gotta do to make it happen. Everyone can have a quarter acre lot, like you know what, nothing's, you know, it's not rational. But you gotta motivate people to get that first opportunity. And like, you know, it's, you don't have to always deed restrict. If you provide that unit at the lower cost of ownership to start off with, after a certain portion of time, they're going to move up in their career and they're going to move out. But having a unit at 900 square feet in Vacaville, in a mile and a half away, there's a house at 3700 square feet. Economics are not going to allow that house to exceed that house. If that house goes from that price to this price, this house will go up too. But it was, you would have this equilibrium imbalance. It would still allow the entry home to stay entry home in Vacaville. Cause no one's going to pay $900,000 for a 900 square foot house while they could pay $900,000 for a 35 square foot house, same city. That's how economies work, scale work. So we can start this. We just have to jump in. And if we can produce units at lower cost, the, the economy will always have that buffer. Like people aren't going to pay the same for a $1 million house. So I think like we, a lot of your investors or developers talk about, you know, how feasible it is to actually bring units to the market at say a sub 475 purchase price in this marketplace. Sorry for, you know, going on and on, but this is a lot. And I just want to make sure like we really just focus on this because when you look at the numbers, it's scary. Like the 30% is a joke. So I pulled the data through Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac and GSE based on three agencies. Almost 90% of all mortgages last four years had a debt to income ratio above 38. No one from the millionaires to literally people that can barely afford rent are spending 30% or less. The only weird thing was you had a two-year period from COVID when rates were 2%, 3%. Where you had this influx of people that had to load debt ratio because of rates. When we came back to reality, now we're in a whole different world. So sorry for rambling on. But like this whole, this whole facade of we're going to find a way to live below 30%, like we're going to set us up for failure. Cause every other city in America can't do it either. So like, we need to be rational and create homeownership and opportunities of rent. But we think we're going to hit 30%, like that's, that's a pipe dream because no one else is hitting it. So sorry for going on and on. But, but the data's out there. I, I think it's really frustrating on top of, see like state data and they say, oh, 30% like you guys are all stupid. I should say, but it's not going to work. It's, we need to focus on, yeah.
Yeah, let's, we could probably get a lesson from you because of the industry you're in.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. It's, sorry.
All right. And I know that you're going to end up bringing information back to us in this conversation. Definitely not going to get to all our agenda items tonight. Real quick comments and then I want to open up to the floor. We know that we, we lost a lot of our leverage from redevelopment way away. We only have so much property. We're in a temporary crisis. I think we also need to envision a program that creates a solution that doesn't make a permanent solution to a temporary problem. Also need to be cautious, even in the interest of trying to create a revenue stream through an ordinance that isn't a one size fits all. In other words, 10% is it 2%? Is it, what's the size of the unit? Are we looking at master plan areas in the future? I mean, if we're building 380 units a year, do we create unintended policy that instead of trying to hit our arena numbers, what we're doing is, is we're impacting potential other growth? And are we impacting commercial if somehow what you're hearing tonight is, is that we end up saying, hey, we're going to put this on the back of industry that we're trying to bring here for good jobs. The next thing you know, it drives developers away and drives business away. So I'm just always looking for the unintended consequence of where a policy can go. I know I've shared with you, I lived in one of those sixplex complexes when I was a first time buyer and I got the, I got the technically the, the restriction. And I had to go through a process when I sold it and, and it had to go to somebody else that it could. And so I think it was based on those years, it triggered my, my memory that because it wouldn't sell, I had to go through some other problems. So they probably have learned some lessons along the way. I do believe that we, we should explore what our options are from what you're suggesting and what those types look like. I, I do get concerned when we look at parcels and then the impact of, is there a tiered approach to, are we looking at places that could hold a thousand units, 2000 units or 20 or 30 units? Because if it doesn't pencil out, then developers won't build it, even if, even if we're trying to encourage it. I think it's unrealistic in today's world that we're going to get anything to pencil out less than 500,000 these days. But it sure would be nice if we had an alternative to redevelop it. So I think it's, it's trying to be creative. I'd be very interested to see what that looks like. I'd like to, kind of like what you said, it'd be nice to hear developers' belief in success and what, what they could tolerate and what they could cooperate and collaborate with. So those are just some of my thoughts. So I appreciate your presentation and, but I, I lived in those sixplexes and I hear of places that where there's deed restrictions in, in the, the lakes or whatever it is over in Fairfield. So there's, there's opportunities for doing good things without having to say that everything has to be about the low income. Your own report says that there is a, there's a definite impact of the influx of the Bay Area. And at some point, when everyone satisfies their needs, do we then leave, you know, live with a, a policy that doesn't have an end date? And it simply continues to drive a problem that somehow then we get behind. And so we just have to be reasonable. We have to be balanced about what we do. And I know that we're going to have conversations about the urban reserve and some of the other impacts on probably less of an impact if it's a higher, you know, a larger area can probably absorb a lot more in community benefit and also in the ability to focus on that instead of trying to do it parcel by parcel. So those are just some of my thoughts. And with that, I want to open it up to the public for some comment.
Hi, Alicia Minion. I just have a couple of comments. I'm getting really sleepy, but I'm holding out to the, to Councilwoman Silva's item. So, okay. I, I was wondering if the city has ever approached existing apartment complexes? I see some that are one story, some that are two story next to commercial areas that they could go to two or three floors. You know, it seems like that kind of, has the city ever approached existing apartment owners, asking them any way that they could basically build up? And I see a lot of older apartments anyway, that's something, wondering if you've ever, you know, reached out to existing apartments. Because as, as you said, Mary, Mayor Carly, it's very, those affordable housing is very expensive. It's like 500,000 to a million per unit. I'm convinced there's like a scam in this whole thing. You know what I mean? But, but it can be built cheaper as Erin Morris was saying, if it's a private developer. But as soon as the city starts contributing incentives, then maybe it has to be union labor or, you know, you might trigger some other law. Now suddenly it's 500,000 a unit. So, I mean, I think this is like a very detailed complex area. The other question I had is the median household income that went up to 112,600. I'm wondering, has the city broken out the census tracts? Cause I'm curious if it, this, that, that median income went up so dramatically because we're building new homes. These people are, I mean, from out of the area, they generally work out of the area. So I'm just, it, it feels like all of these programs that the state has and everything, it's, everything's just getting worse. There, no one has, has had a solution. It's literally making things worse. I mean, developers have the incentive to just not build. Let's just wait until all these new homes are built and these higher income people move in. And then the median household income goes up. Oh, okay. Now we can build an affordable housing project because now we'll, we'll rent it to moderate income. And these are people that make 120,000 a year. Okay. So none of this is making any sense, but I think I would love to see. Okay, so none of this is making any sense, but I think I, I would love to see the census tracts because I think there is a nexus, who needs the housing? And those people are probably on the waiting list in our, in our Vacaville Housing Authority. I don't know if Emily, how many people are on the waiting list for an apartment with a HUD voucher? I mean, I think, let's see, who, who needs the housing? But this idea of inclusionary, I, I am more interested in first time home buyer type programs because this city is already thirty eight percent rental. If we've, I feel like we're creating a temporary community. It's like a revolving door. And I don't know if that's, you know, and I know some people just simply have to rent, they'll never own a home. And by the way, I don't think it's a bad thing. I'm just saying, I constantly, I feel like I'm constantly fixing something. It's not, you know, homeownership is not all that. But I'm just saying, but if it's really important to you and you have that kind of comfort in fixed housing costs, I vote for that, cause it just feels like we're building too much rental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Lisa said something, so I have to. One of my sisters, uh, when her and her husband were starting out, bought a deed restricted home in Watsonville. They were just, just very poor. But, uh, they had two factors when they bought that home. One, if the house in the neighborhood was well maintained, after a certain amount, they would share in the equity. And if they had social responsibilities, so their neighborhood was pretty tight. And that played the whole, my sister's been meticulous, her husband's same way. But the whole neighborhood was that way. And they knew that they had, they, they were given the knowledge or the information. And then they took on the responsibility, knowing that at the end of the road, if the whole neighborhood was good, it would keep everybody's houses up. You never saw a neighborhood like that in Watsonville. And I don't know if you know much about Watsonville, but, uh, you know, so. They became the Jeffersons. It was great. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'm gonna bring this back to the council. This is, I know that we're gonna have more conversations to come. I appreciate, uh, your, all the comments and the takeaways. So I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At, at the risk of continuing the conversation, just, I wanted to point out real quickly. Uh, Ms. Morris mentioned, you know, coming back with more. So i- it's very clear to me that, uh, we presented a lot of information to you. I'd like to suggest that we come back with a special meeting focused on just taking all these pieces to the, this puzzle and having a, a comprehensive conversation about it so that we can get on the same page um, as to what the vision is for housing. Because tonight, you know, our focus is on inclusionary housing. And I just wanna, you know, a lot of good dialogue tonight. But what we're really talking about is kind of a comprehensive approach because I'm hearing a lot of conversation tonight about affordable housing. And again, as Emily shared with you, the definition of affordable housing is very, very specific. Um, it's, it's deed restricted or it's guaranteed to be affordable to a particular income uh, bracket for a prescribed period of time. The other comments, um, there was lots of good comments about attainable housing, what I call attainable housing, which is more along the lines of, um, what is the proper price point for the market so that more people can have um, opportunities for homeownership? And, and that, quite honestly, boils down to density. Because you're building more, you know, a denser product that is, um, you know, you're getting a bigger return on the investment. So therefore you can, you know, theory have a lower price point. So there's a lot of different elements here to this big picture puzzle. So I think, you know, we, uh, very valuable and important to have that comprehensive conversation going forward. And I will just tell you that from my own experience, you know, this is my fifth jurisdiction and in four jurisdictions that I work in, I was absolutely responsible for this kind of conversation. And I will tell you that I've seen, um, examples of inclusionary zoning, uh, that were utilized that did not work well. And I've been a part of examples that worked very well. And what I just wanna say in closing for this conversation tonight is, is that we're not limited to just one type. I- i- in, in looking at how our city has grown, um, and is planned to grow, I think there's a real opportunity, if not a need, to implement a variety of these different tools that we're talking about and shared with you tonight. Because we are uniquely diverse in terms of what we have and where we're going. And, you know, unlike a lot of cities that are locked in, in terms of, you know, not a real opportunity for growth, we do have opportunities for growth. We're gonna have that conversation with you in, you know, the next few months about where is the right place to grow? Is it, do we need to grow more? But that's another conversation. But, uh, and I think before we have that conversation, we need to get on the same page as to what is the vision for, you know, housing? Um, and so I appreciate the opportunity for us to share this with you tonight. We'll be coming back to you with the objective design standards. And I think that that's pretty much the, the final piece before we can really start talking about putting these all together, having a, a, a good, uh, discussion and establishing the vision. And then we can start talking about where do we go from there next? Thank you for your time. Thank you to, um, staff for putting this together. And, um, I, I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, I appreciate it and, uh, very thankful for, um, what you and staff have done in trying to create a comprehensive bite sized chunks of information, packaging it together and bringing it together because this is such a complicated topic. So really thank you. Okay.
I just wanna apologize, Ms. Morris. My, I'm irritated about a few things, um, and, uh, how we've, how we, whoever we wanted to find a we, uh, with housing and, uh, the result of some other issues that have been going on my, the longest time that I've been a millionaire since the eighties. Anyway, so I just wanna apologize for my tone.
Thank you. All right. So, so how are we doing on time? So we, we have a potential pass here for this.
Well, so, Mr. Mayor, um, by our municipal code rules, um, at ten thirty, we need to, um, have the conversation if we wish to continue, um, or if we desire to push, uh, the remaining items to a future meeting. I will mention that we do have the, the only two items we have left are the EOP session. Um, and then we have Councilmember Silva's request to come back to talk about, um, some notification and outreach efforts. If I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Silva, you will not be at the June thirteenth meeting? Okay, so clearly the, the last item on the agenda, um, since it's Councilmember Silva's, that would have to be pushed beyond that. And I will just tell you, June thirteenth is, um, a fairly light agenda, especially compared to the June twenty seventh meeting. So I'd be cautious about pushing things to the June twenty seventh only because it is a very full agenda with, um, the housing element, the environmental justice, the municipal code update, and of course, the budget, uh, approval. Not to mention a few other things on the agenda. So I just share that with you for your consideration on what to do next.
Well, how long is the, this next presentation if we were to swap the two?
So how long is the presentation tonight? I think it's fairly brief. I don't know the level of comment from the, the council on this. I know that there's definitely some interest in this subject.
Councilmember Stockton, thoughts?
Yeah, while I, while I appreciate trying to push through, I, I, I'm exhausted. And I think that we have kept everybody up here. I think that this, um, next topic of conversation um, deserves, um, our ability to be able to, um, not be maybe so mindful of time uh, so that we can really, um, dive into it. I, I, I know that's probably not what everybody wants to hear. I would like to get it done as well. But we'll also get into council comments and by the time we're done, it's gonna be one o'clock. And so, um, my, and my, my preference would be that we maybe move the, um, you know, the, the next item to our next meeting, but put it first on the agenda. I, I feel bad, Chief, that you had to wait, but I just, like, I think that if we're gonna pass it, it shouldn't wait until the very end again and then we keep them online. Just my two cents.
But have, have any other thoughts? Otherwise I'll, I, I'm gonna go ahead and, and say that we're gonna move the last two items to a future meeting. Close with, uh, comments.
Just, just to clarify, um, I heard Councilmember Stockton suggest that we push the EOP to the June thirteenth meeting. We'll have six out of the seven council members. And if that's acceptable to the council, I, I feel comfortable with that because, um, again, it, it is a relatively light agenda compared to the twenty seventh.
Councilmember Silva says it's okay with him.
And then, uh, with Councilman Silva's permission, we'll look at pushing, uh, your discussion out in, in two, well, keep in mind the other, the other point, just as a reminder, we only have the one meeting in July. Um, so that would be the second m- meeting in July, July twenty fifth, I believe it is. Thank you.
So we're, you'll take care of that and make sure it's on the proper agendas. And then we'll do that on the front end, keep it short. Uh, but we'll, hopefully we'll be able to put yours more on the front end so that.
Sorry, Chief.
All right, with that, um, reports to the city manager. I had to ask. All right, reports to the city council, Councilmember Stockton.
I'll be very brief. Um, I hope everyone has a fun and safe, um, Fiesta Days. And, um, I, I just also, uh, wanna recognize that Memorial Day is not a day of celebration. It is a day to remember those that didn't come home. And so, um, to the families, to the loved ones that, um, lost their loved ones, um, serving our country and paying the ultimate sacrifice, um, I hope that you, um, have a day that you can reflect on, um, an appreciative, a nation that is appreciative of the sacrifice of your loved one, um, ga- giving for our freedoms. So that's it.
Councilmember Silva.
Like similar, uh, just wanna extend my condolences and sympathy to all those who sacrificed their lives serving our country. Um, you know, my grandfather served and, and, uh, just hearing a lot of his stories, uh, from his time in Korea, uh, having a lot of friends, um, and seeing an impact, you know, the impact that had to them, some folks that I have the honor to serve with on this council. Um, you know, uh, hopefully we don't lose again sight for, for what that day is about. Um, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, you know, a shooting, um, still, you know, processing it uh, in different ways, um, in our town, uh, youth lost his life, uh, youth made choices to engage in this activity. Um, the next evening, I rode along with PD. Um, I don't think I'm at liberty to talk about, uh, things that I've observed. Um, but, uh, and I'm, to be honest with you, I'm still trying to process, uh, a lot of it. Um, you know, just as far as where, where, uh, what people deal with, what people accept. Um, how some people, uh, you know, use the system or use kindness of, of others. Uh, and on the other hand, you still got folks that are, the majority of folks are just trying to work for a better life. And, you know, we're all, we're all here, um, you know, you guys are here late at night, we're here. Uh, there's a lot of folks out there just working, just to live a better quality of life. Um, and I do appreciate everybody trying to do their best to, to accommodate that. Uh, one of the things that, you know, I, I don't know the solution to certain situations, you know, when, um, you know, when, when folks are ready to, you know, unload a whole clip. Uh, I do know that there's kids that have to stay at home in the evening while the parents work jobs. Um, I do know that there's elders that stay at home to help take care of their kids. And that's one of my fears. Uh, in the recent study session, they talked about, uh, you know, what keeps us up at night. Um, you know, that's, that's the ultimate sense of accountability in a time where we have less and less accountability in our society. Um, and, uh, what I wanna do rather than focus on the negative is just really, which is easy for me to do, but, uh, is to focus on some positive things. And kinda where I wanna, I wanna leave this is on, on two things. Uh, just, just before the meeting, I haven't had a chance to touch base with city staff. Uh, we've been, there's a wall that was, uh, getting gang graffiti for a little while. And, uh, collection of Eagle Scout project, uh, you know, wanted to, hey, you know, looking for Eagle Scout project, a group of kids looking at how to improve their neighborhood. Um, so collectively just basically evolved to where we have a youth, uh, youth design, uh, by Vacahay mural or art club. Uh, mural, um, youth organized, so project managers, he, he will, or aspiring Eagle Scout, um, with the completionist, it'll be done. Um, and then, uh, community led, community initiated, a gr- a group of kids that are gonna come out and actually paint. Um, so I'm, I'm really welcoming and hoping folks who are available June third and fourth, uh, particularly June third, so hopefully not count one day, um, come out to the, there's this retaining wall along Markham Avenue, it's two hundred and ten feet. Um, and, uh, a little plus or minus. Um, there's already an outline that's been, you know, approved or went through the, through the city. Um, but that'll be the day where essentially kids and teams will come out and they'll paint, paint different shapes, designated colors. And I'm really hoping and envisioning to seeing that, uh, really blossom. I'm looking forward to working with, uh, Councilmember Stockton on, on how we can really celebrate this, this event. Um, I know there's, uh, we won't be talking about policies. I think it's okay if, you know, all of us come. Um, but, uh, you know, everybody's out there welcome and I, I really hope to see this. Uh, every time we're out there just to share this, every time that we do a different community service project, whether Eagle Scout or just some folks in the community, the neighborhood, you know, cleanups, similar, uh, just got, it gets, it brings people together and it just shows like the value of working, the value of when people actually, um, not just, you know, have meals together, but actually, uh, do work together, you overcome a lot of barriers and you start seeing the similarities that we have between each other as human beings, um, rather than a lot of, uh, you know, what we receive to be our differences. And so, um, I'm hoping this is a continuation of something that continues to grow and transpire uh, that, uh, that can truly transform the lives of those who are involved and, and beyond. So. Um, last note, uh, next Tuesday evening at Pacifica, um, what's the name? Uh, they're gonna, uh, we have a, a, uh, listening session for elder, uh, for aging, uh, in, in Vacaville. So if anybody's out there just wants to express any concerns or get some additional information, um, Councilmember, you know, I'll be out there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
I attended the MCE information this week and I will just say that there were a lot of public there and they want information and to find out more. So it was great that we had that, um, and just keep doing out what we can do to communicate with our public because they are the ones that are asking for information about things like MCE and battery storage and things like that. And I will say that on Thursday, it's a special celebration for the eightieth celebrate, eightieth anniversary of Travis Air Force Base. And so anyone that is able to go, that would be a wonderful opportunity to be there and just recognize the importance of Travis Air Force Base. And if you did not see it, um, earlier this month, we lost a longtime Vacavillian Lieutenant Bruce Sui passed away at a hundred and six. And he was a great person for Travis Air Force Base and had all, I heard him speak earlier this year or last year at the POW presentation because he was a, a POW for thirteen months. So I just wanted to say, to acknowledge the passing of Lieutenant Bruce Sui and his contribution to Vacaville and the United States. And for all the present veteran, uh, active and retired veterans that we have.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Um, first thing is on Sunday, the twenty eighth, uh, city's putting on a kind of a mini public safety day. We're providing free CPR training, both familiarization and certificated. So Captain Paul, in chief, if you have any of your cadets or explorers that need a CPR certification, we have the class going on on Sunday morning. I know there's Fiesta Day stuff going on as well, but there are still some spots if anybody needs, uh, that, um, and other people brought up, yeah, Memorial Day, uh, city does a nice event at the, uh, local cemetery. Uh, the Sacramento Valley, uh, Veteran Cemetery on Dixon does a huge event. I believe they're putting up flags on Saturday. Yeah, the twenty seventh. Uh, then they'll be taking them back down the, the following week where they go put flags on all the headstones. Uh, it's very popular. So if you don't get there, you may be stuck in traffic trying to get in and out of there. And then, uh, last thing I wanna comment on is, I know last council meeting, I had an emotional item, uh, cause stuff that happened with one of my, uh, coworkers and friends. I just wanna say this, one thing I liked about the city is like, after that happened, I had outreach from the staff, my fellow council members, I even had people from the community email me and message me on Facebook, uh, showing support. So that's really awesome. One reason why I like living in Vacaville, cause yeah, the people on Facebook don't even know them. They just found me on Facebook, sent me a message. So that was, that was really nice. So, yeah, appreciate that. Appreciate this community.
Last, I just want to say again, thank you, Emily. Just wanted to call out some of what I consider amazing work by you and your staff and from housing. Received a, a letter this week from a resident that was relocating here and through no fault of their own, it's a difficult system to navigate to find a house. It was on Monday and within 24 hours, you and your staff navigated the difficult system and helped person and really get settled in and when they probably were just about to be homeless. And so it just goes to show you the, the level of work and commitment that, that we do here. Just want to make sure it gets noticed and just, just share that publicly. So we have a great program and you do amazing. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'll be very brief. I appreciate the amazing comments about, yeah, power.
Hold you to it.
The last one was a tangent, I got very involved. I, I could, I thought you did a very passionate dissertation, but this, as far as Memorial Day and the meaning of it, it's just very important. I really appreciate how you guys highlighted that. You know, I, I think my father served, my grandfather served, my uncle served, my great uncles, T.C. Airman, my great grandfather served, everyone served except for like, I like, so like maybe it may as a bad as saying the first, I didn't serve, but I, so it's amazing, I can rely on people that have served this country. And it's amazing to see what's really the essence of Memorial Day. But, you know, I, on a latter note, had a fun event. I really appreciate it out of my heart for Jeanette and I never heard of clean up and that was a lot. It was, it was a great experience. I had to do daddy daycare when my wife was out of town, so I had two kids, four stops, running around with a dog in the car the whole day. It was a lot, but it was amazing to have the help in the community. So on a latter note, that, that was a fun, fun adventure, get with kids, but thanks for everybody staying with us till 11.
Councilmember Roberts, you had one more thing.
Yeah, I did one thing I forgot to mention. Yeah, tonight you probably want to keep Guam and the Philippines and your thoughts are currently getting hit by a category five typhoon and there's active duty air force base on there. And I think it's projected to hit maybe the Philippines tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow evening. So yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on right now in the Pacific.
And thank you for sharing. With that, we're going to conclude. There's no closed session tonight, so this meeting's adjourned. Good night, Vacaville.[1754.45]